Recording in progress.
Classic show.
Good evening. Time being seven o'clock. I call the April 16th, 2025 meeting of the Franklin Town Council to order. Please pause for a moment of silence. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Announcements from the Chair. All citizens are welcome to attend public meetings in person. To view the live meeting remotely, citizens are encouraged to watch the livestream on the Franklin Town Hall TV YouTube channel or the live broadcast on Comcast Channel 9 or Verizon Channel 29. Meetings are also archived by Franklin TV, again, on the Franklin Town Hall TV YouTube channel and shown on repeat on Comcast Channel 9 and Verizon Channel 29 for those who missed the live meeting. To listen to the meeting remotely, citizens may call in using this number, 929-205-6099. This will not permit participation in the meeting. To participate in the meeting remotely, citizens are able to join a Zoom webinar using Zoom webinar ID 862-0890-0454. Then you need to hit the pound sign. Once again, the Zoom ID Any participants who wish to speak during the webinar must enter their full name and email address when joining the webinar. All participants will be automatically muted upon joining the webinar. In order to speak, participants who have entered full name and email address will need to select the raise hand function to request to be unmuted. All speakers will be required to state their full name and street address before commenting. Okay, I have a couple of other... Dave Callahan, Chairman of the School Committee, will speak under announcements from the Chair.
All right. Thank you, sir, Dave Callahan. And so we've Franklin School Committee have had a couple of meetings since the last time I was here, and a lot of really great updates from the Early Childhood Development Center, elementary school, middle school, and high school, all about really what's happening next year and the reorganization that we're doing, because again, doing once in a generation reorganization, kind of bringing down 10 schools, down to seven, and just for a better educational experience for all of our kiddos. Over at the elementary and middle school, both of the presentations absolutely lights out fantastic, and because what they're really doing with the reorganization is building the structure and the entire system and schedule from the ground up. And so if you're curious about kind of what happens, it's, you know, if it's been a minute since you've been in the classroom or you've had kids in the classroom, highly recommend kind of checking out the elementary and the middle school updates, because they really kind of show what the new schedule looks like and the experiences kind of from bell to bell that a lot of the kiddos are having. And I think that it's on Franklin Matters, too, they kind of like broke up the audio, so you could really kind of jump into each one of those individually. It's fantastic. And then over at the Early Childhood Developmental Center, ever since I kind of got on School Committee, I've always been hearing about how there's so much demand for these kiddos, but that's just, there's no space to fit them all. And it's always been a big issue that we've kind of had. Well, now with this reorganization, the Early Childhood Developmental Center is going to be expanding over to where Kennedy is currently at, and so they'll be able to really have now these two extra sites and expansion of their program. And I can kind of talk at length about many things, but in terms of early childhood and the benefits of getting kiddos into the school systems as early as possible. But what I'll say, just kind of being pragmatic, the Early Childhood Development Center is a tuition-based program. And so as we're able to kind of expand the program, we're also expanding that revenue base as well. Over on the other end, over at the high school, Dr. Maria Weber and her team and Superintendent Chagir, that entire staff have been working tirelessly to secure a lot of new grant funding. And because of that, they're able to use a lot of the grant money that's coming in now to open up some new programming over at the high school, including some career pathways. There's some other programs that Dr. Weber kind of spoke about where some of the students can now kind of get college credits for some of the classes that they're taking as well. And so I really wanted to kind of highlight that. I know at one of the listening sessions, we had a gentleman kind of talk about, all right, you know, we have the structural deficit that we got to solve. What happens next? What are some of those areas that we're looking at to try to fix some of these issues moving forward? And we're really kind of seeing, you know, the expansion of the Early Childhood Development Center, the reorganization that's happening from K to eight, that there's just so many, right now, about $3.1 million in annual savings that we're looking at. And even over at the high school, that the constant grant funding that's kind of coming on in. So each School Committee meeting, we're constantly kind of talking about those new opportunities that we're kind of doing, hopefully to that gentleman to kind of answer that question that you had. And one other thing I wanted to kind of mention, because I know you all, Town Council, had written a letter to the School Committee, kind of talking about, a lot of the conversation has been about Horace Mann, and had mentioned about like elevating Horace Mann and his legacy. And so the Subcommittee, we discussed that. We had a great attendance. Chairman Mercer was there. We had President of the Historical Commission as well, a few other folks. And so what the Committee had recommended, and what's going to be moving to the full School Committee, kind of moving forward, is to have the entire area, so the Early Childhood Development Center over on Oak Street, the middle school, the high school, and all like the surrounding fields, that entire area to kind of henceforth be known as the Horace Mann Campus. And so it was something that was during the Subcommittee report, we also mentioned it at the School Committee meeting, and there was a lot of excitement, a lot of great conversations. If all you have is 30 seconds, I highly recommend, if you haven't already, check out, right towards the end of the meeting, Committee Member Dr. Paul Griffith had some incredible remarks around it. But basically, the idea, I know you all had wrote to try to elevate Horace Mann, and, you know, hopefully, you know, through naming this area, be able to elevate him, but to truly honor his legacy as the father of public education, we can also fully fund the public schools moving forward. And so we're really excited about everything that's kind of going on, and we got April vacation coming up, but then we'll be right back in business on the 29th. So thank you very much.
Hello. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Council. Thank you. I'm Nancy Donello, your Town Clerk. So I'm here tonight to inform the residents that on April 28th, 13,530 notification of special election cards will be mailed out to every head of household in Franklin. The intent of this card is to notify all residents of the special election for a proposition two and a half override in the amount of $3,862,672 to be held at the Franklin High School on June 3rd from 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. The postcard will have the ballot question on it, as well as links and a QR code with all information about the override and the election. The QR code will take you to the Commonwealth's page to register to vote, and I will also have a link on the card for a vote by mail application. And of course, you can always call my office, and we'll gladly email you or mail you an application. All of our permanent absentee voters, you do not need to reapply. And if you're unsure, if you're a absentee voter, just call my office. I'll gladly let you know. Now, in an effort to save money, I opted to only send one card to each household. There's no need to send five or six cards to each household. So if you're a resident, if you're a registered voter, you don't have to call and say you didn't get a card. I know you didn't get a card. We only sent the one, okay? And in a few minutes, you're going to hear from the Clerk of the Council with a resolution regarding the hours for in-person early voting. So it is on the agenda. I'm not going to get into it. Glenn will do that for me. As always, call my office or the Town Administrator's Office with any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Okay, other announcements from the Chair. Town Council will hold office hours tomorrow morning, April 17th, 8:30 at the Franklin Senior Center. The Franklin Department of Arts, Culture, and Creative Economy is excited to announce a request for proposal, or RFP, for artists to create artwork for Franklin's first public art micro gallery. The RFP is currently open with a deadline of May 1st, 2025. For more information, head to the RFP Micro Galleries page on the town website. Come and explore the Franklin Downtown Partnership Ladybug Trail Spring Walk. On April 26th, the rain day this Sunday, April 27th, get your trail map at the Franklin Historical Museum at 80 West Central Street. The trail map guides you on where to find the Ladybug sculptures tucked among buildings and other points of interest along the trail. And Saturday, April 19th, the Franklin Sculpture Park will host its second Accessibility Earth Day program, the Love Garden Project. As part of our Accessibility Earth Day cleanup, we're inviting the community to come together and help create a permanent, interactive sculpture made of beautifully painted rocks. Okay, moving on, citizens' comments. Citizens are welcome to express their views for up to three minutes on a matter that is not on the agenda. In compliance with General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 20, the open meeting law, the Council cannot engage in a dialogue or comment on a matter raised during citizens' comments. Town Council may ask the Town Administrator to review the matter, and nothing herein shall prevent the Town Administrator from correcting a misstatement of fact during citizens' comments. Is there anyone in Council chambers that would like to speak on an item not on tonight's agenda? Jane, please, name and address, please.
You don't know this already. Jane Callaway-Trip, 607 Maple Street. I'm here to speak in regards of a major trust issue in this town, with those running things and the residents. We have residents, we as residents are continuously being asked to trust everyone in charge, yet our voices are continuously ignored. The project on East Central is a prime example. Many residents came forward against this project. Five of you voted in favor under the 40B requirements. However, we are above the 10%, and this project did not need to pass and could have been handled differently. We have a ZBA that is appointed by the TA, approved by the Council. The members of the ZBA have ignored letters and emails sent to, by the residents, and even some of the, even some of the Council with no response. They chose to cancel their last meeting, knowing the time of invoking Safe Harbor would lapse. Safe Harbor was a legal way to end this project as it is, and it was ignored. They did not listen to the residents. They did not listen to the former Town Council members. They did not listen to a former Town Administrator, and they did not listen to present Town Council members. They were all ignored. They ignored everyone. The building in this town is out of control, and has all, has all been done using 40B compliance as its reasoning. Well, that is not acceptable anymore. We are around the 12 or 13% per one of the meetings that I sat through. The only reason to continue to proceed is to make our town look like the city that it has been declared to be. Our downtown will continue to drown, as there is nothing there that screams family or shock daily. We will see high rises all over the place, and we will lose the town that we all cherish and love and as we become the next Framingham. We urged the Council to recall their votes on this project and bring it back to Council and vote this project down. They chose not to. We urged the ZBA to invoke Safe Harbor. They chose not to. We want the resident, you want the residents to trust. You want the residents to approve overrides and give more money that many do not have. Then you need to start listening to what we want for our town. Remember, trust is not a right. Just because you sit on a council or you're a Town Administrator or on any board or committee in this town doesn't give you the right to be trusted. Trust is earned, and from where I'm sitting, it has not been earned, but it has been broken.
Okay. Is there anyone else in Council chambers that would like to speak on an item not on tonight's agenda? Steve, just name and address, please.
Certainly. Steve Sherlock, 13 Magnolia Drive, Community Information Director for Franklin Matters, Franklin Public Radio. A couple of public service announcements in addition to the pieces you already mentioned, Mr. Chair. On the 26th, that'll be a very busy day here in Franklin, as everybody starts coming back in. There will be a minor thing, somebody that I know, he'll be doing a favorite poem reading at the library at 10 o'clock. But more importantly, birthday celebrations in different places, Drug Takeback Day by the Safe Coalition, Disability Expo at the Senior Center, and there is more. So it's a full day. If you want it, the schedule, Franklin.news has it on a daily basis. In addition to Clerk mentioning the notification coming down on the election, a quick reminder, the six listening sessions that were held, the video, audio, and text is available. If you still have a question, there are three FinCom meetings the week after everybody comes back, April 28th, 29th, and May 1st, before you get your two sessions, May 21 and 22. So there's plenty of answers, plenty of time for getting answers. One of the long-term issues we have, as I see from my years of reporting, et cetera, is the zoning bylaws are, one, not well understood, and, two, the one way we can truly enhance our smart building going forward. So I know Councilor Frangello has mentioned, I'm also part of that Ben for Franklin Group, Building Equitable Neighborhoods. It is the one opportunity we as citizens, residents, neighbors, can come together to advocate, to understand what the zoning is, and then work to make the changes accordingly. So two things. Tomorrow night is another monthly meeting at the studio. Come by, 7 o'clock. And then, May 4th, they... Excuse me, I should have had a drink. May 4th, Jane's Walk. Jane Jacobs was an urban advocate. Councilor Frangello and I will take a walk through the neighborhood, talking about how the neighborhood looks and feels versus the zoning that we have, and what zoning can be. So, thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Okay. Is there anyone else in Council chambers that would like to speak on an item not on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, is there anyone out there in Zoom land that would like to speak on an item not on tonight's agenda? Okay, moving on. Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes. I'd entertain a motion to approve the minutes from March 19th, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Discussion, additions, deletions. Seeing none, the vote will come on the motion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, tonight, we are very fortunate. We have three proclamations to give out this evening. And just to give a little preface into how we'll do these, I would ask that everybody stay at, you know, the groups after you get your proclamation. Please stay in Council chambers. When all three are completed, we'll take a short recess, and we'll take pictures in Council chambers with each of the different groups. So with that, I would, our first proclamation, let me see, the first one is cheerleaders. Okay, if I could have the cheerleaders come up and just kind of stand around in front of the door and block the doors. And protect us. And before I have Councilor Plegory read the proclamation, just want to say to our audience, ladies and gentlemen, please welcome the pride of our town in the spirit of champions, the Franklin High School Cheerleaders. After a year of relentless hard work, dazzling performances, and unshakable teamwork, these incredible athletes brought home the 2025 National Cheerleading Championship. Their energy, dedication, and passion lit up every stage they touched. And now they stand as national champions, a true testament to excellence, unity, and school spirit. Let's hear it for the powerhouse of Franklin. I'd now ask Councilor Plegory, former FHS cheerleader. Eighteen, eighteen. They can speak into the mic, please. We want you to talk to everybody.
Give us a chair.
See what happens to old cheerleaders. We end up here cheering, though, for the whole town being on the Town Council. So there you go. Let's see, the Town of Franklin, a proclamation honoring the 2024 and 2025 Franklin High School cheerleading teams on their championship victories. Whereas, the Franklin High School cheerleading team has won the 2024 and 2025 state championships, as well as the 2025 national championship. And whereas, the 2025 state championship win marks the fifth consecutive state championship for Franklin High School cheerleading, solidifying the Town of Franklin as a powerhouse in state cheerleading competitions. And whereas, through their commitment to excellence and display of incredible teamwork, the graduating seniors have won seven out of eight state champions. That's wonderful. And whereas, representing the Town of Franklin with pride, the Franklin High School cheerleading team brought home the 15th state championship to the Franklin High School. Now therefore be it known that the members of the Franklin High School cheerleading team are hereby commended for their unwavering dedication, tireless commitment to excellence, and countless hours of rigorous practice, and are recognized by the Town Council of the Town of Franklin for proudly representing the Town of Franklin as back-to-back state champions. Signed by our Chairman, Thomas Marissa, and presented to you tonight.
Okay, next, our second proclamation is Franklin High, for the Franklin High School Boys Basketball Team, and I'd ask them to come forward, please, assume a similar position over here by the doors.
They're so quiet now.
They're exhausted.
They're tall. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, it is with great pride and excitement that we introduce to you the Division I 2025 State Championship Basketball Team. This incredible group of athletes has demonstrated extraordinary dedication, teamwork, and resilience throughout the season. With countless hours of practice, grit in every game, and a relentless drive to succeed, they have risen to the top and brought home the state title. Under the leadership of Coach CJ Neely, this team has not only achieved greatness on the court, but has also exemplified sportsmanship, unity, and school pride. Their journey was filled with thrilling moments, tough battles, and unforgettable victories, all leading to a well-earned spot as the best in the state. Please join us in welcoming and celebrating your state champions. I'd now ask Councilor Delarco to read the proclamation.
You guys doing good. Great job. As, before I read the proclamation, as an old high school football coach at Franklin High 10 years ago, because you guys did a great thing. And my son played basketball 10 years ago on that Franklin High team, so it's, I do not coach basketball, because you don't want me to coach basketball. The Town of Franklin proclamation honoring the Franklin High School Boys Basketball Team on their achievement in becoming a state champion. Whereas, the Franklin High School Basketball Team delivered an outstanding performance during their incredible 2024 season, concluding with an overall 27-1 in an undefeated 5-0 run in the state tournament. Secure victories over Shrewsbury North and over Bridgewater Rainham, Central Catholic and Newton North. All great teams, boys, great job. And whereas their league record this year was 16-0, marking back-to-back undefeated seasons and making the Franklin High School Boys Basketball Team the first team in 50 years. and making the Franklin High School Boys Basketball Team the first team in 50 years to achieve their feat, while also reaching back-to-back state finals for the second time, 2017, 2018, 2024, and 2025. A milestone no other hock-a-mark team has accomplished even once. Even -- and whereas, with four all-star players and a unified team, everyone stepped up and had a big games on different nights. And everyone embraced their role in helping the team win, focusing on playing for each other rather than individual accolades. And as a coach, that's awesome. And whereas, the team defined what it means to be part of something bigger than themselves as they demonstrate strength, teamwork, and excellence throughout the 2024 season. And whereas, despite being against incredible competition, the team was able to use their special brand of defense to carry themselves to the school's first state championship. Now therefore be it known that the members of the Franklin High School Boys Basketball Team are hereby commended and recognized by the Town Council of the Town of Franklin for proudly representing the Town of Franklin as state champions. Signed by Thomas Mercer, our chairman, and the rest of the Franklin Town Council. Great job, boys. One you'll never forget.
Okay. We have one more proclamation. And I think if I could have Kevin, Emma, Richard, and Derek come up and assume a similar position. This is another really special one, for sure. We'd like to extend our sincere gratitude to the Dean College Athletic Training Staff for their swift and coordinated response during a recent incident at a basketball game held at the college. Their professionalism, teamwork, and immediate action were instrumental in saving the life of a player. The outcome is a testament to their training, dedication, and commitment to the safety and well-being of our community. And I'd now ask Councilor Chandler to read the proclamation.
I feel like students are fired.
Hi, everybody. All right. From the Town of Franklin, a proclamation honoring the Dean College Athletic Training and Public Safety Departments for lifesaving heroism. Whereas, acts of bravery and selflessness serve as inspiration to all. And whereas, on February 12th, 2025, athletic trainer Kevin Roberts, athletic training intern Emma Mitchell, Sergeant Manning, and communications officer Derek Moreau demonstrated exceptional professionalism and presence of mind by taking immediate action in a life-threatening situation. And whereas, a basketball player collapsed on the court during a game at Dean College, Kevin and Emma immediately recognized that the player was in cardiac arrest, began CPR, and applied the AED, while Richard assisted with patient care. Meanwhile, Derek observed the gym activity from security cameras and immediately called 911 to respond. And whereas, their decisive, skillful actions resulted in successful resuscitation, and the patient is expected to make a full recovery. And whereas, through the collaboration, team effort of being part of the chain of survival, the Dean College Athletic Training and Public Safety Departments successfully prevented tragedy and saved the life of another individual. Now therefore be it known that the Dean College Athletic Training and Public Safety Departments are hereby commended and recognized by the Town Council of the Town of Franklin for their heroic team efforts of recognizing cardiac arrest, calling 911, performing CPR, and using an AED to save a life. Signed by Chairman Mercer and the rest of the Town Council. We're very proud of you guys, and thank you for being part of Franklin. You need to stay there. State Representative Roy.
Where's Emma? What'd you do with Emma? She went home early. Half a day. Well, I got to tell you, I've given many citations in my 13 years as a state representative, but I've never done anything like this. And I really want to commend each of you for what you did. And I have citations for each of you from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. I'll read one of them, and all four of them read the same. Commonwealth of Massachusetts House of Representatives, be it hereby known to all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincerest congratulations to each of you in recognition of your heroic efforts on February 12th, 2025, in saving the life of a basketball player that had collapsed on the court during a game at Dean College. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all endeavors. It's given this 15th day of April, 2025, at the State House in Boston, Massachusetts, and is signed by Ronald Mariano, the Speaker of the House, and myself, whose great honor it is to be a state representative. And I thank you on behalf of all of the members of the legislature for your great act in certainly saving that life. So, let me present you these citations, and let's see if I get the names right. I know I'm going to do well by now. And Kevin. You going to give this to him or her?
Yes.
You're not done yet, guys.
That's my Chuck C.
I'm Chuck Allen. I was actually the shift chief that responded that evening. I just want to say, as firefighters, we see firsthand how critical those first few moments in cardiac arrests, cardiac emergencies are. When every second counts is the quick selfless actions of bystanders like the individuals running here today that truly make the difference between life and death. They didn't hesitate. They stepped up. They used CPR. They applied the AED. You truly saved a life. That's real heroism. On behalf of the Franklin Fire Department and the American Heart Association, it's my honor to give you guys these awards today from the American Heart Association.
My name's Lieutenant Mike Kolecki. I'm the patrol supervisor or the patrol lieutenant here in Franklin for the PD. I was not working this night, but I received an email from the responding officers commending everybody involved. I can't do it enough justice. Like we've all heard, these guys responded with the utmost professionalism, and they were able to get a fortunate outcome in situations like these. So, in regards to Kevin, on behalf of the Franklin Police Department, we'd like to present you with the Public Service Award. This award was established to recognize a member of the public who has significantly contributed to public safety. We would also like to commend the members of the Dean Police Force who helped achieving this successful outcome. And with Emma not being here, we have another award for her. But in the -- in this case here is our Public Service Medal that we'd like to present Kevin with and Emma at a later date. So, without further ado, congratulations.
Okay. Sandra, wait a minute, guys.
One more.
Is your chief one o? The college has some presentations to make to the individuals as well.
Just wanted to say a few words. Again, I wasn't on that duty that night, but obviously, everything that we saw through the video and saw the actions of all those involved, it's truly our honor at the college to recognize the fine work that all of you did, the quick action you did, the response, that the teamwork together really made a difference in that individual. The college would like to present you a lifesaving award in token of your achievements.
Now you're done, guys. Okay. Before we take a short recess, I have one other thing that isn't on the agenda.
Oh, boy.
You'll hear.
Take a moment and try to figure out exactly what we've got here. As you know, this weekend, we're about to embark on the 250th anniversary of the birth of the United States of America. And as part of that commemoration, we are asking residents and citizens and local communities and states, and this is a national effort, to display lanterns at their homes, their schools, their civic buildings, anywhere along the nation. And this is part of the Two Lights for Tomorrow event. Two Lights for Tomorrow is a nationwide initiative to commence the celebration of the 250th birthday of the United States of America. The famous ride of Paul Revere occurred overnight on April 18 to 19 in 1775. Two Lights for Tomorrow originated out of multi-state collaboration at a common cause to all in Williamsburg and uses the imagery of that shining light 250 years ago as a uniting call to action today for our fellow citizens, no matter where they are, to commemorate and remind ourselves that our history is about and to remind ourselves that our history is about working together for a better tomorrow. At its heart is a call across the country, in private homes, local communities, and state houses alike, for two lights to be displayed to remind us all of the importance to come together to form a more perfect union. And as a member of the 250th commission to celebrate the American Revolution, I've been given two lanterns to bring around the community. And I wanted to be my first stop to be at the Franklin Town Council to get a great picture with all of you holding these two lanterns that we can make part of the Massachusetts celebration. Actually, these photos will be part of the social media campaign for Mass 250, and they will be sent down to Virginia to become part of the national celebration. So, if you would indulge me, would love to join with you to commemorate these, and we're going to try to get these around the community as much as possible over the next couple of days. Thank you.
We're going to take a short recess, but we'll -- we're going to do that picture first.
Thanks. All right.
Recording stopped.
Oh my goodness. My body.
Nice seat.
You might understand.
Excuse me. Call the April 16 meeting of the Franklin Town Council. Back to order. Next item on the agenda is appointments. 2025 election workers. Clerk will read the appointment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is an appointment for election workers. The town clerk has submitted this list that I'm about to read of names attached here, too, as Exhibit One, to be appointed as election workers for the June 3, 2025 Town of Franklin special election. Carl Cedequist, Anne Visanti, Mary Ellen Fico, Alisa Checoway, Mary Beth Durico, Lisa Regan, Mary Kinney, Emma Goulet, Paulette Mabardi, Joanne Shanahan, Heather Martin, Robert Trahan, Lois D'Amico, Nancy Clarkson, Barbara Kelly, Phyllis Malcolm, Jean Gentili, Sue Cass, Colin Cass, John Lepresty, Georgiana Fitzgerald, Gina Lassie, Mary Harrigan, Joanne Osborne, Sandy Babuski, Steve, I need help with this one.
Shultheis.
Huh?
Shultheis.
Thank you. Shultheis. Kevin Currents, Betsy McMillan, Teresa Sabadorne, Gail Vera, Lynda Kelleher, Robert Darty, Denise Seer, Maria Lucier, Gil.
Matanz.
Matanz? Thank you. That's why the town clerk is here. Patty Gorham, Sandy Brenn, Von Brenner, John Hisse, Maureen Gulani, Patty Wiley, Carla Casabean, Mary Lou Costello, Mary Downey, Nancy Whitehouse, Nancy Rappa, Annen Kelleher, Jim Dacey, Carol Dacey, Sue Collins, Kathy Clareer, Patricia Hurley, Sharon Willen, John Mans, Karen Currents, Lynda Kelly, Frances Cofflin, Deidrick Donovan, Jim Santoro, Diane Lind, Janet Jewett, Betsy Cook, Lynda Grant, Kim Bradco, Michael Brown, Denise Brown, and Joe Hurley. Motion to appoint the persons whose names appear in Exhibit One as election workers as requested by the town clerk.
Second. Motion and second. Discussion. Seeing no further discussion, the vote will come on the motion to appoint the 2025 election workers as just alluded to. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next item on the agenda is public hearing. And we have two this evening, and I'm going to open them both at the same time. So I will open, declare the public hearing on zoning bylaw amendment 25-927, a zoning bylaw to amend Chapter 185, Section 3 of the Code of the Town of Franklin, definitions, shared use commercial kitchen, and zoning bylaw amendment 25-928, a zoning bylaw to amend Chapter 185, Attachment 3, Use Regulation Schedule Part 2, principal uses, shared use commercial kitchen. I will declare both public hearings open. Okay, since this, Jamie, any?
Just three, Mr. Chairman, really quickly. One, this bylaw was referred unanimously from the EDC to the council. The council referred it to the planning board. The planning board had a hearing recently. The planning board did vote unanimously to endorse this zoning bylaw change in basically one sentence, and I know some of the councillors will chime in on this as well. This does not address residential or home occupation issues, what a shared kitchens bylaw is intended to do. It's a commercial zoning district issue only. Both of these bylaws and the hearings relate to the same issue. And really, what this allows is the kind of commissary commission co-working kitchen, incubator kitchens. For people that don't know what those are, it's essentially a commercial space that can be used throughout all hours of the day from different businesses that are trying to do basically kind of startups. Or they could maybe not be startups. It could be a mature kitchen and have it work that way. So it's basically a shared kitchen space, which allows more businesses to be able to thrive and be able to get off, be able to get off to a good start. So that's it in a nutshell. I know the building commissioner is here as well. He's in the back. If anybody has any questions.
Thank you, Jamie. Okay, since this is a public hearing, I will go to the public first. Is there anyone in council chambers that would like to speak on either of these zoning bylaw amendments? Please, name and address.
Max Margiello, 127 Central Park Terrace. I wasn't going to say anything, and I actually have a close friend who is interested in baking. And one of the things that there's actually in Providence is it's a cooperative kitchen where different people get to use the kitchen and then sell their products, but they're not together as a single business. They're all individuals that just happen to use the kitchen and use that space to sell stuff. I didn't know if this zoning bylaw allows for that, or if that's something that could allow for in this bylaw. Thank you. Perfect. Perfect. I highly, well, yes for this, please. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Is there anyone else in council chambers that would like to speak on either of these zoning bylaw amendments? Is there anyone out there in Zoom land that would like to speak on these bylaw, zoning bylaw amendments? Seeing none, I'll go to the council. EDC Chair, Councilor Hammond.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through the chair, I just wanted to thank Gus Brown and Kathy Liberty, who worked on these amendment, these bylaw amendments for us. And we've been kind of talking about this for a while. And to be able to have it in our use tables makes it so that people know that you can do it. And it's really a big economic push for the little guys to move in, you know, to the steps of the, of the rung. Yeah, no, the steps. You gotta make steps forward.
Baby steps.
And, yeah. So this will help people to get to their dream of, if they have a dream of brick and mortar, or if they just want to do it in, as Max said, do it in a shared kitchen and then sell somewhere else. So, but thanks to the planning board, who all approved this. And I think we've all, we've heard this at least the third time, I think, talking about it. So that's, but just thanks to everybody.
Thank you, Councilor Hammond. Any other council or playground?
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah?
There are people that do cakes in their houses. There are people that do chocolates in their house. Are these people going to be able to go there to do their cooking?
Yes.
And still be able to sell it from their homes?
Not tied in.
Say that again.
Town administrator.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Council playground brings up a great question. So they're, they're distinct issues. Actually, what you're speaking of is what's called home occupation. And we are, the EDC is actually looking at a bylaw change on that in about a month or two. The staff right now are working on that. But essentially, what Max had suggested and what your friends may be doing at home, if they wanted to get out of their kitchen, and they wanted to rent a space that was pretty cheap rent, because, you know, if you have a rented, say, $5,000 a month, and it's shared among four different businesses, because somebody may be baking bread at 3:00 in the morning, but they may be making chocolates in the afternoon, right? So it basically allows a shared kind of co-op kitchen to be able to allow that individual to, you know, get off their feet. So we are dealing with the home occupation issue separately, and that will be addressed in a couple months.
So to answer your question directly, it's, that's for preparation. They can then sell it wherever it's legal to sell, whether it's to go to the farmer's market, or they have a, some other place that's permissible to sell at retail, or mail order, whatever they're doing with it once they need it.
Out of their homes.
Well, if it's zoned for that, then that's one thing, but that's a separate issue as far as when you get to the retail aspect of it. This is a preparation and perhaps retail area where they're sharing it. What happens from then on depends on where they want to go, what they want to do.
Thank you, Councilor Peddery. Councilor Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, through you to Jamie or to the town council, I'm obviously assuming the Board of Health is responsible for maintaining the well-being of these types of premises. Is there going to be literature written into this that specifically states what type of cooking or food preparation is going to be allowed in these types of spaces? I mean, because from what it sounds like, you could have a whole variety of different types of food prep. Is there going, would they need to either apply with the property owner or the town if they wanted to make their affairs at this location? How would that work? I'm just kind of curious.
So really, how it would work is whoever the property owner would be, they'd go into, exercise a lease for a time and place, right? So whatever the hours were. And then they would go through the regular food inspection process with the Board of Health. You know, they're talking to Kathy, this is not a really heavy lift for them at all. And they would just go through the regular permitting process that they went through the Board of Health. So I think as someone mentioned, I already forgot who, but the Board of Health is really, I think it was Councilor Hammond, really is, you know, this finding board here that sets out those regulations. But I think when you go to get your food permit, I'm sure, you know, if you're, if you're making like spaghetti, you know, or some other, you know, baked goods, I'm sure they're going to be curious of what exactly is happening. Because if they're going, if Jenny's going to go do the inspection, they're going to know exactly what they're doing. So the answer is yes, Glenn.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll set Councilor Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other councillors? Give them a shot. Okay, so seeing no further discussion, I will declare the public hearings on zoning bylaw amendment 25-927 and zoning bylaw amendment 25-928 closed. We'll now go to legislation for action, and we'll go to Action 9B, zoning bylaw amendment 25-927, a zoning bylaw to amend Chapter 185, Section 3 of the Code of the Town of Franklin, definitions, shared use commercial kitchen. This is the first reading. Clerk will read the bylaw amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is zoning bylaw amendment 25-927, changes to Section 185-3 definitions, shared, shared use commercial kitchen definition, a zoning bylaw to amend the Chapter 185, Section 3 of the Code of Town of Franklin, being enacted by the Franklin Town Council, that Chapter 185 of the Code of Town of Franklin is hereby amended at Section 185-3 definitions by adding the following text. Shared use commercial kitchen is a commercially licensed space primarily for prepared cooking and producing food, for off-premises consumption, for use by chefs, bakers, caterers, food trucks, and other culinary professionals. In addition to providing shared kitchen space, commissary kitchens may provide additional services like culinary education and incubator programs, demonstration space, and business development support. The foregoing zoning bylaw amendment shall take effect in accordance with the Franklin Home Rule Charter and Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 5.
Move zoning bylaw amendment 25-927 to a second reading.
Second. Motion and second. Discussion on the motion. Seeing none, the vote will come on the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Legislation for action, 9C, which is zoning bylaw amendment 25-928, a zoning bylaw to amend Chapter 185, Attachment 3, Use Regulation Schedule Part 2, Principal Uses, Shared Use Commercial Kitchen. Again, this is the first reading. Clerk will read the bylaw amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is zoning bylaw amendment 25-928, zoning bylaw to amend the Franklin Town Code at Chapter 185, Attachment 3, Use Regulation Schedules, Part 2, Principal Uses, Shared Use Commercial Kitchen, being enacted by the Franklin Town Council, that Chapter 185 of the Code of Town of Franklin is hereby amended by following additions to Section 185, 185, Attachment 3, Use Regulation Schedule, Part 2, Principal Use. What's been added under Principal Use is 2.27, shared use commercial kitchens, mainly in C1, C2, DC, BI, LI, O, and MBI. No other additions, sir. And finally. This foregoing zoning bylaw amendment shall take effect in accordance with the Franklin Home Rule Charter and Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, Section 5.
Move zoning bylaw amendment 25-928 to a second reading.
Second.
Motion and second. Discussion on the motion. Seeing none, the vote will come on the motion to move zoning bylaw amendment 25-928 to a second reading. Majority votes required. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we'll move back to license transactions. We have none this evening. Presentations, discussions, we have a couple. The first one is Franklin Police Department Mental Health Clinician Division. The first one is Franklin Police Department Mental Health Clinician Division. Kelly. Kelly, if you'd just introduce yourself.
Yes. Hello, my name's Kelly Montagno. I am the Co-Response Program Manager with the Franklin Police Department. And I'm here today to talk about the Co-Response Program. Thank you for having me. It's an honor. So co-response. What is co-response? I know you've all heard it, you've all been super supportive of us, but what really does co-response entail? What it is, is it pairs master's level mental health clinicians with police officers. The co-response model, what that means is that it's a ride-along model. So we are in the cruisers, going to calls with the officers live when they come in. It's more of a proactive, so the co-response is, you know, we could get to our shift and get into the station and immediately jump into a cruiser with an officer and just ride around. So we're able to go to any call that they can go to. And then if a call comes in that may involve mental health, substance use, crisis, really anything that a clinician could be beneficial on, we're there in the moment and it's a fast response. The cross-training piece is really nice, because we are in the cruiser. As you can see in the photo, we have our clinician Caroline and Officer Rosa. So when we're on the way to calls, on the way back from calls, we can kind of debrief and talk about what we thought that they did was helpful, what they thought we did was helpful. And we're constantly learning from one another, which is really nice. And our police department is very well-trained in mental health. And then there's that mutual understanding, because we are embedded in the program, they have trust with us and we have trust with them. So it works really nicely on calls, when we can kind of use that unspoken language to determine what the outcome might be. So these types of programs, they started in 2003 with the Framingham Police Department. The initial goal of the program was to divert individuals who have mental health or substance use challenges from unnecessary arrest. Because being in the criminal justice system is not where these people need to be. And then the police are looking for a better solution than repeated responses. So going back to the house multiple times, or wherever that person may be, sending them to the emergency department, and they're discharged an hour later and the police are back there. So this program helps to prevent that repeat response. So a timeline of Franklin Police Department's Co-Response Program. So this program started in 2018. We launched at the end of November with some grant funding. And we partnered with a third-party behavioral health agency. And the program was a regional program. So it was Franklin Police Department and Medway Police Department. I was the first clinician here through that third-party agency, which I was hired through. In 2023, thank you to Town Administrator Jamie, had a great idea to kind of separate from that third-party agency and start something directly through the Town of Franklin. So we now have what's called the Co-Response Model, Co-Response Program. And they hired me back in July of 2023 to kind of oversee the program, really build it up, get more clinicians. And we hired our second clinician in November of 2023. We then hired our third in April of 2024. And it, I gotta say, it is very difficult to hire good clinicians. So we were very lucky that we were able to hire very quickly with really good staff. So now we operate with three full-time mental health clinicians. So what is our role? So we, like I said, we correspond to the, with law enforcement to 911 calls for service. We respond at the officer's discretion. So we will only get involved if the officers want us to get involved. It's voluntary for them to take us out. If they don't want us to be there, we will not get out of the cruiser. We're always asking, even if it's someone we may be very familiar with, and they say, not today. Sure, no problem. We're here to help you. We're not imposing. We always talk about calls, come up with the same ultimate goal of what's best for the individual in question. We do overdose and substance use follow-ups. We utilize the system where we're notified of overdoses, even if somebody overdoses outside of Franklin, but they live in the town, we'll get notified by that other town. And we'll go out, one of us will go out with a detective, plainclothes. Nobody's in trouble, and we'll do an overdose follow-up to offer them resources, support. We even offer to drive them to detox that night if they want it. We are crisis clinicians, so what that means is we are in-the-moment support. It's acute situations. We don't really do long-term support like a therapist would, so that we can kind of have that higher caseload and meet the need of the town when people are in crisis. We do do care coordination. I would say especially during COVID, when providers, there wasn't, there was really long wait lists for mental health providers during COVID, we were able to do a little bit more of that care coordination. We could do check-in, follow-up calls, get them linked up with services, which we still do now, which is really helpful. And then we also do department training. So for the last two years since I've been back, we do internal mental health training with the department. So I hold a training in February, March, with just the Franklin Police Department over the course of two days. We teach them different topics on mental health, substance use, different resources they can use. And so far, it's been helpful. I would hope they say the same thing. And then we also participate in stakeholder meetings. So we're always working with other resources, agencies in town. We work part of the FCAT team, which I'll get into a little bit later, but really working collaboratively with everybody in the town. And we are a pretty resource-rich town comparatively, which is nice. So kind of went over the goals. Like I said, that initial goal was to divert people who have sub, uh, mental health, substance use challenges away from the criminal justice system and into appropriate treatment. They don't need to be in a jail cell. They probably need to be getting some mental health or substance use treatment. A jail cell is not the place for them, or prison, what have you. So we want to get them away from that. So if we can do that immediately when the person's in the crisis and get that started before that even gets to that point, that's the ultimate goal. We've kind of evolved more into diverting from the emergency room as well, unnecessary hospitalization. So we can, if we can keep people in the community and keep them with the supports at, at home, link them up with what they need, so that they can remain in the community with those proper supports and not have to go through the hospital and wait in the emergency department. It can be traumatic for people. And then finally, like I said before, just to increase collaboration with the social service providers and amongst the police department, so we have a good working relationship. So even if we're not there, the police know who to call, they have resources that they can use as well. So what are the benefits of having an embedded clinician? Not all police calls involve, with individuals with mental health challenges are criminal in nature, but we can frequently assist. So like I said, we're proactively on the road in the cruiser. So if a call comes in and we just happen to be there, motor vehicle accident. If we're at the station, that's probably not something we would be dispatched to. It doesn't, a mental health call. But say the driver is really upset and anxious, and the police need to, you know, do police things and take care of traffic in the accident and process the scene. We can sit with that person and just kind of provide support to them and help calm them down and take the load off of them, but also off of the police officers as well. We can help with all different sorts of things, missing persons, sudden deaths is a big one. So when we have sudden deaths, that ties up a lot of police resources and time. And you have family or friends that are really upset on scene and kind of get, you know, fallen to the side, and we're able to sit there and spend as much time as we need with them. We can link them up with resources. We have great resources for after we leave. We never leave somebody alone. We make sure they have somebody with them. We'll do a check-in call days after they've lost their loved one and really provide that support. It could be hours, and it's just sitting with that person. I would say it's the most challenging thing that we do, but it's also the most rewarding to know that you're helping someone in that incredibly difficult time. Domestic, Section 12, Section 35. And we also do in-cell assessments. So because we're at the police station, for individuals that need to be arrested, maybe cannot be diverted from an arrest, but are having some mental health symptoms, maybe they're really upset in the cell. If the officers want us to go in and talk to them, because we're right there in the station, we'll go in and talk to them while they're in the cell, offer them support, resources. We leave it with their belongings. We can coordinate with the court clinician, let them know, hey, this person's coming to court tomorrow. We met with them, they are in need of some resources, they're open to it, knows what they're willing to do. All of that, which police officers don't have the capability to do, so we can really help them do that. With three of us, there's more coverage. So initially, it was 40 hours a week, now we have 120 hours, which is great. It's better support for the officers and the people that we're encountering in the community. There's consultation opportunities. So my phone's always on. I know the other two clinicians, they always have their phones on. So even if we're not there, we're getting calls from the department, from the officers, and we're very willing to help if they have a question. Hey, have, I think you guys talked about this person, you might know who they are. Can you just help us kind of paint a picture? And we're happy to do that with them. And we also, like I said, coordinate with all the providers in town and also outside of town. We work very closely with Riverside Mobile Crisis, who covers the area of Franklin. So they're a great resource for, if we're not here in the moment. So funding, the police department, the co-response program, we've been operating with grant funding since 2018. So from 2018 to 2023, we were covered by the Department of Mental Health Jail Diversion Program Grant, which covered the clinician salary, clinician supervision, some training. I believe the benefits were picked up by like that third-party agency. But the grant covered the majority of the program. So from 2023 to 2026, we continued with the DMH grant. And then we were graciously, thank you, gifted ARPA funds to be able to have the three clinicians and operate. And we're able to, like I said, do some of that continuing education and training, which is invaluable. And for 2026 and beyond, or 2027, I should say, we are looking at about 100,000 per year from the opioid settlement funds that will be used for the co-response program. So the clinicians, who are we? So this is me, Kelly Montagno. I began my career in mental health in 2015. I started as a crisis clinician in Marlborough Hospital Emergency Department. So I've been doing crisis for 10 years. I love it. I came, like I said, to Franklin in 2018, their first clinician. Left in 2022. I ended up training police officers and clinicians across the state on how to do co-response programs. But when Franklin said, this is what we're looking at, do you have any interest in coming back? It was an absolute no-brainer. I love this town, I love, I love the police department. So jumped on that opportunity and returned in 2023. Just some of my education, I do have a master in forensic psychology, which is great for this work. However, I'm not licensed, so I'm now going back for a second master's in social work to become a licensed social worker. And I have that graduate certificate in crisis response and behavioral health, which is great. It really teaches how to do co-response and work with people that are in crisis. And then we have Sonia Wagner. Sonia is a licensed mental health counselor. She began her career in mental health in 2016. She started at the University of South Florida Athletics Department and at Walden Behavioral and the Eating Disorder Clinic as a counselor. She did, she was, I should say, the first co-response clinician for the NADIC Police Department in 2019. So Sonia and I worked together at that previous third-party agency. I might have poached her from there. So she, she was great. She started up NADIC's program. They loved her, we're sad to see her go, but yeah. So she's very happy here, and she came to us in 2023 as the second clinician. She has her Master of Arts in Mental Health Counseling. Sonia is independently licensed, which is great. And then finally, last but not least, we have Caroline Ferris. She is a licensed clinical social worker. She began her career in mental health in 2018. She has experience working in crisis, grief support, students and first-year college, substance use, and mental health challenges related to medical diagnoses. She has her Bachelor of Arts in Psychology, and then she has her Master of Social Work, which is great. And so she is currently working on her independent licensure right now. She's getting supervision, getting her hours. So she'll be independently licensed hopefully 2026, 2027. So eventually, all three of us, me being the last, will be independently licensed, which is great. It's great to have that resume for all three of us. And Caroline also went through the graduate certificate program with myself, and I might have taken her from that to come here to Franklin. So she's, but she just hit her year mark, so we're happy to have her too. So that's us. And then, so I've talked about the program, how effective is the program? Well, it's pretty effective. So 2024, this is our annual report. We encountered 837 individuals last year. We had 16 diversions from arrest, which is an 80% diversion rate from those who were eligible. So this, these numbers, the cost savings numbers, I pulled from the Department of Mental Health. They do an annual report where they come up with estimates. So how much estimate is it, when somebody gets arrested, how much does it cost? How much does it cost for someone when they go to the emergency department? So they came up with these numbers. So $7,169 to be arrested, that's what it costs the, the state. And so when we multiply that 16 by that number, we come up with a cost saving of $114,704 for the year, which is great. And then for diversions from the emergency department, a little low in my opinion, the 2,188. But we were able to come up with a 93 diversions last year for a total cost savings of $203,484. And then a total estimated cost savings for the year of 2024 of $318,188, which is fantastic. And I will note that Caroline didn't start till April, so that's three clinicians. We didn't have, we had two. And then Sonia was actually out on medical leave for about six months. So there wasn't three of us for this full year. So I would, I'm excited to see the numbers for this year, when we're all here from January to December. And this is more of an accurate depiction, I would say, of what a typical month looks like for us. So this is from last March, just last month, statistics breakdown. We keep stats on everything. We keep thorough data of who we encounter, the populations. So we had 100 total encounters last month for the month of March. We did 20 in-person evaluations. We had 80 non-traditionals, which we call, we call them non-traditionals, but essentially are follow-ups. So if we're not there, we don't work midnights, overnights quite yet. But if the officers have somebody that they know could benefit from a follow-up, they will make a report for us. We review the logs, we have access to the logs, so we'll be able to take a peek in those. And if we see somebody that might benefit from a follow-up phone call, we'll give them a call. We also do in-person follow-ups as well. Anytime we do anything in-person, it's always with the police. Last month, we had two post-arrest evaluations. So those are those in-cell assessments that I had mentioned. And then 11 out of the 20 evaluations we had, the people were able to remain in the community. So over half of the people we saw were able to remain in the community with follow-up support, which is great. And then just some of the population, pretty diverse. Seven juveniles, I categorized that as under 18, elderly under 65. We had 49. Definitely have a lot of elderly that we see. Three homeless, one veteran. And we had two sudden deaths. So like I said, that, that's a lot for, for one month for clinicians. Like I said, it can, it's kind of taxing work, but it's, it's important work. So we were able to do that on two occasions. We went to six different stakeholder meetings, and then we also got some training in there last month. So March was pretty busy, but like I said, that's an accurate, I would say, depiction of what a typical month looks like for the three of us. And just some case examples of what we were able to accomplish. So we were able to assist two elderly clients with domestic violence and mental health resources and follow-ups. That's something we work closely with other providers in the town, such as the Senior Center, to get them services in place after they've gone through something traumatic. We were able to help the police department in locating a suicidal individual. They were ultimately located in Boston and safely transported to the hospital. We had that in-cell assessment where the arrestee was upset and in need of resources, open to resources, and was very grateful for the clinician that he met with and was able to leave there, leave, you know, custody with resources in hand, which is great. We were able to divert four individuals from arrests before, you know, even getting arrested, and to, and then into an appropriate treatment. And then we met with a community provider that we've dealt with a couple times, probably more than a couple times, in the last month on how best to utilize us. So we went there, met with them. We have, you know, we have clinicians here, like, we're here for you. We're a community, really community-based police department, and we want to help you and want to work collaboratively with you. So how can we do that? And it was very successful. So just kind of a snippet of what, what goes on in a, in a month. So the future, what does the future look like for our program? So from, with that opioid funding that we're getting, we have, like I said, the, about 100 grand each year from FY '28 to FY '38. So just to kind of look at those numbers of what we deal with, with people who have substance use challenges. From 2019, we started doing those overdose follow-ups, and we still From 2019, we started doing those overdose follow-ups and we still do them today. So from 2019 to today, we've had an 82.76% success rate of attempted follow-ups. I think it was, we attempted 116, only 20 of those we weren't able to contact for whatever reason. We'll try to contact the person in question. We'll try to contact family. It's not always successful, but it is a pretty good success rate. And then, like I said, we keep thorough statistics as the clinicians. So in looking at numbers, about 30% of the people we encounter have a substance use challenge, which is a good chunk of the people that we're encountering. So using these opioid funds to continue doing the work that we're doing is the ultimate goal. And then just to show you kind of what it, we did photos. We did some fresh photos with our young officers. What it looks like from having one clinician to having three clinicians. So I did the first full year that we had the program, 2019, when it was just me. We had 390 encounters. It would be interesting to see, because I know COVID is a bit of an outlier, but the 2020 and 2021, pretty busy. 22, we just had one clinician. 23, we only had half the year. And then, like I said, 2024. So the number really just jumps when you have, you have more clinicians that are able to do the work and provide that seven-day-a-week coverage that we weren't, are just, are not able to do with one clinician. And then I'll let Amy go a little bit more into this, but we do participate in the FCAT team, so the Franklin Crisis Action Team, which launched in November of 2023. It involves six town departments. We're one of them. We work with the Board of Health, Fire Department, the Senior Center, Town Administration, and Veteran Affairs. And we have had over 25 cases to date that we've been working on. So what do we do? We meet monthly. It's ongoing communication. We're always in communication with our team. It's super collaborative. We're not duplicating efforts. So it's nice to work with, you know, other town providers. If we have one person that we know, an elderly person, for instance, that we know, senior center, they might be going to the senior center, they maybe should go to the senior center. We can all work collaboratively together and not overwhelm that person and just get them the, the support they need through one point of contact. And like I said, it does provide that wraparound service and referrals that we can offer to them. And it's proactive. So we're always out there trying to help people the best we can. I don't want to take away from what Amy's going to say, get more into it. But it's been, I would say, very, very successful. It's, it's a great team to be a part of. We're very lucky that they have us. And that's my presentation. Thank you so much.
Callie, just any questions? Are we sure? Counselor Cormier-Ledger.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
For everything that you guys do, truly. It's unbelievable work. As a dad of a child with some pretty severe special needs, we've had to call Riverside a few times. So I understand what the challenges that you have. One question, the first of my questions. It said $100,000 in opioid settlement money, starting, I believe, in FY, was it FY28?
I had done it wrong. FY28, yes.
So does that, so obviously, the program with three clinicians costs more than $100,000. So are you just basically advocating right now that there's a gap and that more money is going to be needed because that's all that's allotted right now? Is that, just to understand that slide correctly?
That's correct. It'll, just a couple of things. One, that is correct. Number two, you know, there are still active opioid settlements out there, right? So I think as Amy gave a presentation, whatever it was, in December, that number is probably going to be a little higher than 100,000. But we estimate the cost from the opioid settlements will probably be around 40% to 50% of the total cost of the program, of the division. So at some point in '28, '29, you know, we're way, it's still, seems like eons away from it. You know, we'll be looking for the supplemental funding to try to make this a permanent division in the police department.
Thank you for answering question one. Question two, I know that the, and I know you partner a lot with Safe Coalition. They do a ton of early intervention and preventative work, particularly with kids that they know from destructive behaviors or, you know, that they're on a path towards substance abuse or they're on a path toward hurting themselves and they try to get to that early.
Right.
Do you have the bandwidth with your team to do any more like intervention or early-on training for maybe Franklin Public Schools? Because I know, just again, knowing as a parent and what we deal with with my son, I know that the schools struggle with having the resources to truly help kids with these challenges, with everything else they have going on in school, obviously. But with everything that you do, maybe there's a way that you could, you know, include them in some of your trainings or some of your partnerships, so they're better equipped to handle this for the, for the kids.
Yeah, we're happy to do trainings. Like I said, I, I do internal trainings with the police department. I would say the only thing is we want to make sure that we're present for the police to be able to do that co-response work. But yeah, given that there's three of us, we're happy to do any sort of training. We do work closely with our school resource officers. So if there are kids in school that need any sort of extra help or maybe aren't going to school, the police need to go do a wellbeing check on them, we'll absolutely get pulled in and go with them.
And, you know, maybe just a suggestion, maybe, you know, looping in the superintendent so that he and his team, if there were kids maybe pre-identified, you know, whether it's not just through the officer, but maybe through his team or through, you know, the child's IEP maybe has several red flags that maybe those kids and those families could get some early help before it escalates to a true crisis.
Yeah.
Thank you for all that you do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Cormier-Ledger. Counselor Delacour.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. Great presentation. Obviously, I was a co-founder of Safe Coalition 10 years ago. And, and the, the work you guys do is, is great. Substance abuse, I can remember 10 years ago when I lost four football players to substance abuse. That's when I wanted, that's why I called Jeff and called the district attorney. I was ignorant to the point that, I said, this is easy. We'll just arrest our way out of it.
Right.
You know, and that's what a lot of people think. And it really isn't. So I know part of your job is to educate people that way. And Lieutenant Kolecki's on there, Chief Lynch and Chief what? They're all good at that part of it, I mean, which is good. So it's, it's just so hard because I know people out there still think, you got substance abuse, lock the kid in the closet, come back three days, you'll be fine. And unfortunately, I get that a lot as well as, as you do. And, but the work you do is, is probably much unappreciated. So I do appreciate that. Obviously, I, I actually lost a brother-in-law to alcoholism last night.
I'm so sorry.
And it was just nothing we could do, you know? And I know that's a hard point for you, Coalition, you know, you work so hard and it doesn't end up, because there's not a lot of, should I say wins sometimes? There's more losses than there are wins. So I do appreciate that. And that's what I wanted to say to you guys, that you guys do a great job. And I, you answered one of my questions because I was scared and I know the Franklin Police Department wouldn't let you go into a place that is harmful. So I know, I was very, very glad that I would say.
Yeah, I should have mentioned, we do a vest. I did need to mention that.
I was going to ask that question too.
Yes. We have vests, we have radios, we have cruiser keys, so if things get hairy, we know to get out. We're trained in situational awareness. We do their trainings, yes.
Good, I'm glad, I'm awesome, glad to hear that. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Callie, it was nice putting the question in the picture. Counselor Chandler.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Thanks, Kaylee, to you and your whole team. It's great that we have three. I mean, obviously, everything comes down to money in this town now. But I got to say, you three are worth like six offices. Honestly, because what you're able to do with the follow-ups and, you know, you, you mentioned sudden deaths where you have to stick a police officer and the, the families are so upset. With some, with like one of you three there, you can just calm the whole situation down. And, and the follow-ups that you do, these guys could never do that the way you do it. Because you have, everything's already in place. Like you know who to call, you know exactly what to do. You're worth so much, the three of you. And you talk about different populations, like you do it mostly with elderly and the juveniles. It looked like that was a big spread, you know? I mean, the elderly, I would say, still trust the police, but the juveniles aren't going to talk to these guys. When you walk in, I mean, you can de-escalate probably half the situations.
Ideally.
Yeah, especially with, you know, maybe some juvenile girls that are just.
That's my favorite population.
You're right. I mean, what you guys could do, instead of what the, the male officers could do, is just incredible.
Even the fact that we're not in uniform. We do have jackets and clothing that identifies us as a clinician, but we're in clothes for the most part.
But what a great addition and I'm just so glad that everybody's working together.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Chandler. Counselor Plager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for your presentation. Certainly brought the follow-up to date exactly what you do and what you have done. I have a question, we have three. Are you all part-time?
Full-time.
So then you're all, three people are there every day?
Yes, seven days a week, we have coverage.
Okay. And is that different shifts that you're there?
Yes.
Okay. So it's 24-hour shift?
Not 24 hours, we don't work overnight, yet.
They sleep.
Okay. So tell me about your schedule, how do they work during the day?
So I typically work Monday through Friday, a day shift. Sonia and Caroline both work 10-hour shifts. So Sonia works Sunday through Wednesday and Caroline works Wednesday through Saturday. So we have coverage on the weekends, which is great.
We do have coverage on the weekends. Wow, I didn't know that. What goes on weekends, right?
Yes.
So, okay, once again, thank you for coming before us and telling us all about. Thank you. You've enlightened me.
Thank you, Counselor Plager. Counselor Frandillo.
Sure, yeah, thank you. I, I have the, well, first of all, best-looking presentation to come out of the police department.
No offense, Chief.
Thank you. I'm the only one.
So I keep you guys here at midnight. I, I have the, the privilege of being a part of a lot, a lot of networking groups with other elected officials around the state and country. And the number one thing that gets a positive reaction and follow-up questions from electeds is this program. I think it's one of the prides of Franklin. Thank you for, for sharing more details because that will only make me more equipped to, to talk about the program, which is great. Yeah, I was wondering, anecdotally, have you noticed a, a response? How do people treat you when, when you show up? Is there, yeah, is it confusing? Is there a, a positive reaction?
I think when I first started, yes, it was confusing. People thought, you know, are you a neighbor? Are you a family person? Who, who are you? Why are you here? But the clothing helps that identifies us. And I think we do a really good job of, you know, social media helps with saying who we are. We put ourselves out there. I think we had a call today and someone specifically asked for a co-response clinician. So people are calling now 911 saying, if you have a clinician, can you bring a clinician? Which is, um.
That's great.
That's really good.
Yeah, that's great to hear. That's it for me. I just want to make sure that gratitude extended to the police department and the police chief. I mean, this is an innovative program and, yeah, something that not everyone has, has taken on. And I'm really glad to hear the department's embraced this and, and worked well with you all. Appreciate you.
How to, how to buy your way out of the hole.
That's twice.
I'm putting a good word.
One step, one step forward, two back.
Counselor Hadler.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to reiterate what my fellow counselors have already said. You guys are worth your weight in gold. And thanks for the chief too, right? We have to, and Jamie. It's really important to me that we take such good care of our community. And so, Callie, Sonia, and Caroline, thank you for everything you do. And thank you for taking care of those eight, 857? Was it 850?
It's a lot.
857, I think. No, 37.
37.
837 people that you helped. It really makes a big difference to, to the community. So thank you for everything.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Counselor Hadler.
What, you gonna say it?
Counselor Jones.
Counselor Jones, how are you?
Thank you, I'm good.
First of all, I get really emotional with these things. I just want to thank you and your team for what you do. My wife, when I met her, was a social worker for the state of Massachusetts. As a dumb electrician, I've learned a lot about that over the past 25 years. My daughter, who is actually a psych major, also is working towards this. And I think, in all honesty, a lot of what I heard tonight that I was particularly fond of, of course, helping out the community is, is, is an enormously progressive thing, is the fact that you get to work with our police force and that you, and, and you, and you both get to offset each other a little bit. And that, that's great for our police staff, I would assume. For them to be able to kind of bounce a few things off of you and say, hey, you know, I, I came across this situation the other day and get some feedback from your team saying, how may I be able to approach this? It's such a great local resource to have, something that they might not necessarily seek out on their own. But since it's in-house, they have the ability to approach you folks and get this information. And, and vice versa, you know, you guys get to kind of pick their brains a little bit, say, you know, what's probably the best way to approach this type of situation? And it ultimately, it benefits the community as a whole. And, and it's, it's more than just a cost savings, it's a life savings. And, and, and I, I can't even begin to tell you how wonderful I think this program is and how, and how, all of the hard work that goes into this. I mean, just last month alone, we're extraordinary numbers. And I, and I understand all the hard work that our police officers put into their daily jobs. But this is such a win-win situation as far as I'm concerned. And I just want to thank you before I start to cry.
Thank you.
But again, appreciate you folks, we really do. Sir?
Thank you, Counselor Jones. Is there anyone?
Thank you for the presentation. He's good.
He's good. Is there anyone in Councilroom that has a question?
Max Marangello, 127 Central Park Terrace. Many of those who know me know that I struggled with anxiety and mental health. And I've also, in the past, struggled with suicidal ideation. It's something that I have had to work on. And one time, I was in Boston and it was a pride parade and I wanted to engage in the festivities. But it was very, felt very lonely because everyone's doing their own thing. It's hard to interact with people and I just felt very isolated. And so, you know, I don't feel, I don't feel very good. So I decided to take, it was, it was near Government Center, so I took the green line to the red line because I had to take the red line to South Station. I got to the red line to transfer and it's like, I don't feel safe. And it's right, you know, it's the red line, you know, the tracks are right there. And I think I need to do something. So I, I, there was one of those 911 buttons, you push the button. And I was very fortunate to have someone who, you know, an officer who helped me with crisis response and helped me get through the crisis and got an ambulance and I was able to make it out safe. And it's because the work you do, the, the, the mental health supports that keep people like me alive. So I want to thank you and keep doing what you're doing. Thank you.
Thanks, Frank. Callie, I think all my fellow counselors and not everybody has said everything that we, we just can't thank you and your team enough. But most importantly, I think it's important to go back to the beginning and say to the chief and the administration, thank you for starting this program and then seeing the benefits of this program and expanding the program to what we have today.
Agreed.
It's just, can't thank you enough, Chief, Jamie, the whole police department administrative team, and obviously, Callie, you and your team. So thank you so much.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Okay, our next presentation is Franklin Crisis Action Team. And Deputy Town Administration. Okay, our next presentation is Franklin Crisis Action Team and Deputy Town Administrator Amy Frigillati.
Good evening, everyone. Can you just pull up the presentation?
See, I'm not afraid to pronounce it.
I feel very fortunate before I started to work with the co-response team. And when we were building out the team, I remember when we started building it out at the same time, Jamie had tasked me to kind of pull all the social service coordinators in town together and kind of figure out, you know, what's going on in town with regards to social services, you know, what's the need? We heard a lot of different stories of how many homeless individuals were in town, you know, what the needs were, and really, we were trying to kind of wrap our arms around it and say, you know, let's try to figure it out. So we formed the Franklin Crisis Action Team, which is all of our social service coordinators in town to kind of work and figure that out. So I'm just going to provide a little update on the work here. We'll talk about the mission, who the Franklin Crisis Action Team is, what we do, our partnerships, and our progress. So our mission is, the mission of the Franklin Crisis Action Team, we're an internal municipal working group engaged to support the well-being of Franklin residents of all ages. The team was formed in 2023, and we work to better coordinate efforts and help triage extreme cases of crisis that intersect over multiple town departments. In doing so, we are able to assist residents in utilizing resources, social supports in town, crisis management that they are unaware of, that is available to them, all while keeping everyone's public safety and public health in mind. The team consists of 10 compassionate, professional, and experienced town of Franklin staff. So who are we? Myself, the Deputy Town Administrator. We have Sarah Amaral, our Senior Center Director, Doug Perrow, who is here as well, who is our Franklin Fire Department Safe Officer, Raylene Galvin, who's our Social Service Coordinator. Raylene is actually located at the Franklin Senior Center, but she does serve all Franklin residents, not just our senior population. Shannon Nizvet, the Director of Veteran Services, Callie, who we just heard from, our Co-Response Program Coordinator, Sonya Wagner, our co-response clinician, Caroline Ferris, also co-response clinician, Kathleen Liberty, who's on Zoom tonight, our Public Health Director, and Ginny McNamara, who's here tonight, our Public Health Director. So what does the Franklin Crisis Action Team do? We triage cases related to homelessness and housing insecurity, boarding, unsanitary conditions, mental health, emotional concerns, health and self-care, substance use disorder cases, domestic violence and neglect cases, cases related to Alzheimer's or dementia, food insecurity, money management, and we see a lot of utility-related concerns, where people's utilities are shut off, or they can't pay their utilities. So since the, since its infancy, we've dealt with approximately 27 cases and served approximately 32 individuals. So a lot of these cases are single individual cases. So how do we do this? We really assess the care needs of individuals. We all work together. We meet monthly or as needed. If we need to meet more or less, we just can call a meeting, or we are emailing each other constantly when we're coming into cases. We assess the needs of individuals and really connect them to resources throughout the community in the area, such as Tri Valley Elder Services, the Franklin Food Pantry, Safe Coalition, and so many more. Our local shelters, the Interfaith Coalition. And like Callie said, we really are a resource-rich community, and we're really fortunate to have so many partners and community resources and people that we can rely on that provide a lot of services in town. Another thing that we do for FCAT is we assess the number of homeless individuals and perform outreach, particularly prior to the winter season and during the winter season. This year, we were able to distribute care packages to homeless individuals, and then our Health Department created Housing Resource Cards. So when we're going out, we're providing these cards, so that when people are ready to receive resources, they have that information. And we also do wellness checks on individuals. So we're trying to check in and do follow-ups very frequently. And then we're also working on goal planning, and we're trying to meet people where they're at. So if, you know, we just do small goals and try to get people, you know, into shelters or into housing or access to resources when they're ready. Oftentimes, they're not ready, but sometimes they are. We also help with applications for housing rental assistance, SNAP benefits, social security, disability, fuel assistance, and other programs, and like I had previously said, wellness checks. And Doug here also ensures our fire and smoke detectors are working properly in individuals' homes, and we make health and public safety a top priority. We have a number of partners. I don't want to be redundant, but we just put the partners here on the right-hand side of the presentation. We have a lot more that I'm sure we'd miss, but we really are pulling from resources throughout town, both internally and externally. We work with our community partners on a variety of issues, like I said, food insecurity, wheelchair ramps, tree removal, pet care, dumpster rentals, protective services, and connections to mental health services. We've seen a lot of progress, while many of these cases are complicated and they take a lot of time. We do see progress and success. In addition to better coordination with both internal departments and external community partners, over the past two years, the town has committed significant resources to address these community concerns. With the creation of the Co-Response Program, which we just heard from, and the staff positions dedicated to addressing social service needs, such as our Public Health Nurse, our Social Service Coordinator, and our School Resource Officers, we are working diligently to address cases of crisis within the community. We are also working to provide helpful resources through our Community Assistance Program, with exemptions and discounts, a Community Resource Guide through the Senior Center, and a Housing Resource Guide through the Public Health Department. To date, and we went over a few of these numbers in the last presentation, but to date, the town council, through all of you, we've been able to provide $300,000 in APRA funding to the Safe Coalition, the Franklin Food Pantry, and the Franklin YMCA for the services they provide. And we've also been able to, most recently, provide opioid settlement funding in the amount of $527,000 to the Safe Coalition, Gillies House, William James Interfaith Referral Program, and our pharmacy for addressing opioid substance use disorder. So also, Ted, I wanted to mention to you, through you, that the schools have signed up for the Art Pharmacy Program, which is a really helpful resource to be able to provide some of our youth to connections to services as well. So as part of that programming, we'll be able to train some of our school individuals, our clinicians, as well as some of the leadership team, in identifying individuals, students, that may need help, and we can connect them to some of those services as well. I know that was part of your question.
Yeah, thank you.
And then also, for additional APRA funding, to date, not moving forward, which is what Callie had spoken of, we've provided 559,000 dollars for the co-response. And that's it. I just would say that if people need to get in touch with us about a case in the community that involves a crisis situation, they can certainly reach out to me in the Town Administrator's Office. We also have the FCAT@ma.gov email address. But we'd just like to say, it's not just constituent cases, it's really more higher-level cases of crisis.
Thank you, Amy. Okay, questions from the Council? Councilor Frangello?
Yeah, tremendous thank you again. I think this is terrific. It's really great, you know, since you've organized this, it's been way easier to have a built-in system for responding to crises, as opposed to before, where I felt, you know, we were kind of making it up every time. We did great and put a lot of effort in, but it's great to have this built-in proactive system. So a lot of kudos to you and Jamie and everyone on that group. I know one of the major issues we have is, well, I guess, maybe it's a two-part question. I'll sort of lead you with one of them, but I'd be interested if you can name others. But it seems like services, service shortages around. The main one seems to be temporary housing. Are there other services that you find to be, you know, sort of lacking in the area that are particularly difficult to connect residents to when needed?
I would say the number one would be connections to housing, shelter and housing. I don't know if the team would have anything else that they would say.
I agree with that.
Yes, that's really the number one.
And do you have the latest update? I know we have, last I checked, we had the temporary shelter in Milford. And that was, that was the nearest, and otherwise, we were, you know, providing direct funding for hotels on temporary basis.
We don't do that so much. I mean, mainly, I would say, it would be, it's the local shelters that were, and then we try to get people on, like, to sign up for housing and get housing applications.
Yeah.
But...
I was going to say, too, we utilize SMOC, and that's a great resource, because they have housing counseling services. They have all sorts of different programs, as well as RCAP. They have housing counseling services, too.
Okay.
So they can connect them with different shelter options, transitional housing opportunities as well.
Terrific.
But across the board, there is a waitlist for shelter.
Right.
You know, unfortunately. A lot of times, I will refer to Rhode Island shelters, just because Massachusetts, right now, is such a large waitlist.
And oftentimes, people want to stay, you know, close by, and they would have to go further out if they're able to get a, get a housing opportunity. So that's a challenge always.
Are there any opportunities that have started to present themselves, or developments about expanding shelter options around?
I have not heard of any, no.
Okay, appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Frangello. Councilor Hadler?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through the chair. Amy and FCAT team, thank you so much for all you've been doing. This is kind of a really interesting meeting tonight. It's a, makes me kind of, makes me very proud to be here in Franklin. The fact that you have everything all organized now is like, to me, is like, ah, now you, people can get connected much easier. And that's just, that's just wonderful, the efficiency of that, but also that you can connect people faster to the things that they need and that you have this huge list of partners. It's just amazing.
I feel like we feel that way, too. You know, when we first came together and someone would talk about a case, and, oh, I'm working on it. And so it was a good way for us to all say, oh, do you know of a resource here? Or do you know of a resource here? And kind of triage, and we all know different people or different things that other community partners work on. So it's been really helpful for us, and then also really helpful for us not to be duplicating the same, like, talking to the same person and all providing the same resources or working with the same individual on the same stuff.
Right.
So I think it's helpful. It saves the town money as well in that way. And then we, you know, I think we feel fortunate to be able to just really work together and try to help people the best that we can and meet them where they're at.
And so you said that you meet, you don't meet regularly, or that you meet?
We meet monthly.
You do?
We meet monthly, and sometimes more. Or we'll just, or we'll just communicate online, but we try to meet monthly.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilor Hadler. Councilor Jones?
Why?
All set?
Yes, sir.
Councilor Delarcos? I'll be going quick.
I was going to say something.
No, it's great work. I have been working a couple times with a couple families through the Safe Coalition. I got, unfortunately, and I know what you guys are going through, I have a young woman out there with a baby that's three years old, and she's looking a year away from getting housing, minimum, a year away. And luckily, a family member, her sister stepped up, and she's in there. But, you know, she couldn't get housing in Providence, because she doesn't live in Providence. So there's so many things that come out and stab you in the back, should I say. You know, thank God, we got the Senior Center, we got the Safe Coalition, we got you guys that can kind of divert that. And believe me, that's not the only one I have. I mean, it's the housing. And I don't want to get into the affordable part of housing, and the housing that we need is totally different. And, but, yeah, so I know the work that you're doing. It's just so sad to see a person out there on disability, has a chronic disease, and can't get housing. It's just so, so frustrating to me. And I can't imagine how bad it is with you guys, too. So thank you for all you do. I wish we could help a lot more, but we do the best we can.
Thank you, Councilor Delarcos. Did you, Councilor Jones?
Yes, just a quick comment, Mr. Chairman. Everyone thinks it would take forever to talk. That's not the case. Amy, to you and your team, thank you for everything that goes into making this happen. To throw out one of my typical cliches, is you don't know what you don't know. You know, for somebody who suddenly comes into an issue in their life, just being able to reach out, make a phone call, and realize that these resources are available is a tremendous, is just amazing. You know, and I think we all kind of take it for granted until suddenly we need something, you know? I feel bad for Bobby, his brother-in-law, passed. But, you know, my dad passed away when I was 17 years old. I didn't know CPR. I didn't even know what was going on, you know? But it was a simple call to the police, and they showed up. Unfortunately, they weren't able to save my dad's life. But that was a moment in my, in my life where I learned that I need to learn. You know, I need to learn to be able to react and do the things that I need to do in hope that if something like this happens, that I at least will be able to help. And knowing that we have this level of resources in our community that are available to our citizens when they're in need, it, it, it just, it's such a heartfelt thing, and it makes me feel so proud. This is one of the main reasons why I love being a town councilor so much, is the tremendous team that we have in this town, in all facets of the community, from the Police Department, Fire Department, everywhere. And I just, I can't even begin to say thank you enough for everything that you do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilor Jones. Any other councilors? Max, name and address, please.
127 Central Park Terrace. I'll be really quick. I just had a quick question. Can the Community Preservation Act fund shelter to either rent by the town or to build a shelter if we add space? Is that something that's within the confines of the Community Preservation Act?
Mark?
It's not a quick answer, but there are funds available for affordable housing resources or housing resources. So if you could bring it under that umbrella, then in that sense, yes, but it'd be a narrow use of the funds.
Mr. Chairman, so there's an annoying stipulation in the law that needs to get changed, that you need to purchase the property to use funds for, like, affordable housing. And there's a lot of nuance on the housing issues in the statute with CPA. But to Max's point, I think there are communities that have created rental assistance programs, but those are very, very complicated to set up. Not saying we can't. But that's a big bandwidth issue, because you have to have criteria, you have to have, how does it relate to federal issues, state issues on housing? We can certainly look at other models from other cities and towns, but unfortunately, the housing issue on CPA is still very complicated, to Mark's point, in state law. It probably needs revision at some point.
Anyone else in the council chambers?
I didn't want Steve to yell at me for not using the mic.
I didn't want Steve to yell at me for not using the mic. Sarah Amroth, Senior Center Director. I just wanted to add a few other points. Awesome job on the presentation. But if the co-response team was going to share some numbers, I'm going to shout out Raylene. This is our first time council meeting. But you see on there, when you see the like, the 25 number of people that we've helped, just to better understand for folks that that's, those are the most crisis cases. And what's great for us is a lot of times if we get a crisis case at the Senior Center, we need the co-response team. And kind of like what Callie said, then they're able to pass those off to someone like Raylene. So I just looked up our numbers for last year, and she provided 1,193 services to 237 individuals. So that's just, and those touchpoints, as you can see, she's working with that person multiple times. She's working with that person for months, sometimes for years. So like you said, we don't always see wins, but when we do, it's incredible. And the thing I'll say that takes off of a lot of our backs is when you have someone who's in crisis or dealing with trauma, they find their person that they trust. And so now that we have this team, it may not make sense that we're the ones working with them, but it's, they trust Ray. So then FCAT can come to Ray and talk to her. Same thing, they might be in trauma where they can't work with the mail, or they're worried about their immigration status. And if they, whoever they talk to, they might want to talk to someone else. So there's things like that. So the fact that we have a team like this, that then we can work together behind the scenes, Franklin's just better for it. So thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Amy, thank you. And Sarah, thank you for adding those numbers at the end.
Yeah, they're big numbers.
For sure. Okay, moving on. We'll go back to legislation for action, and we'll go to zoning bylaw amendment.
Resolution 2518.
Resolution 2518.
Ah, okay, 2518. Resolution 2518, June 3, 2025, election, early in-person voting. Clerk will read the resolution.
Thank you. To the town clerk, this is for you. Resolution 25-18, authorization for early in-person voting for the June 3, 2025 special election. Now therefore be resolved that pursuant to Chapter 92 of the Acts of 2022, also known as Votes Act, the Town of Franklin acting by and through its town council hereby authorizes early in-person voting for June 3, 2025 special election as follows. Special election, June 3, 2025, early in-person voting will take place during normal business hours. That's Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., Wednesday, 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m.
One, one.
I'm sorry, 1:00 p.m., thank you.
Eleven.
8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. in the Franklin Town Clerk's office located on the first floor of the Franklin Municipal Building at 355 East Central Street, Franklin Mass, 02038, on the 16th, 19th, 20th, 21st, 22nd, 23rd, 27th, 28th, 29th, and 30th of May 2025, and from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. on Saturday, May 24, 2025. This resolution should become effective according to the provisions of the Town of Franklin Home Rule Charter.
Move Resolution 25-18.
Second.
Motion second. Discussion on the motion. Seeing none, the vote will come on the motion to approve Resolution 25-18. A majority votes required. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
When they said 11 o'clock, we almost had to call the co-response.
They jumped up.
All parameters left.
Keep them up all night. I'll take third shift. Do I get double take?
Oh, thanks.
Okay, zoning bylaw amendment 25-935, a zoning bylaw to amend Chapter 185, Section 24, floodplain district, referral to the planning board. Clerk will read the bylaw amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is zoning bylaw amendment 25-935, zoning bylaw amendment to the Code of Town of Franklin in Chapter 185, Section 24, floodplain district.
Motion to waive the reading.
Second. Waiting for that.
He can do the title.
Motion and a second to waive the reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Move zoning bylaw amendment 25-935 to the planning board.
Second.
Motion and second. Discussion. Jamie, quick summary.
Just a referral to the planning board. They have a scheduled public hearing. The building commissioner and the planning director and myself got a notice from FEMA that our five-year plan needs to be updated. We did forget that we did this during one of those pandemic Zoom meetings. This is required by federal law, and if we ever had a natural disaster, we wouldn't be able to get any aid in return. So we have to do this. There are very minuscule changes to the actual floodplain map. I just want to make sure I make clear about one thing. Floodplains do change over time. But in this case, we're pretty much insulated from that pretty well right now. So very few changes to the map, and this is a referral to plan.
Thank you, Jamie. Questions or comments from the council?
It's coming back to us.
It's coming back.
Yeah, it's coming.
It's coming back.
Twenty pages long.
Okay, seeing no further discussion, the vote will come on the motion to refer zoning bylaw amendment 25-935 to the planning board. A majority votes required. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution 25-19, acceptance of gifts, Senior Center, $3,014.98, Veteran Services, $11,959.90. Clerk will read the resolution.
Is it 959 or 999?
Nine, I get 959.
I got 959.
I got 999, I'm on. Which one is it?
Jamie, is it 959?
Oh, 999.
What?
The amount for the veteran.
Veteran Services. We have on the agenda 959.
And on the, on the resolution, it says 999.
It's 959.
Oh.
95990.
Is it typed on the resolution?
Yeah.
Must be on the resolution.
959.
The fives and nines were-
Yep.
I'll fix it.
Looking at them like, I need my readers. I'm like, well.
All right.
Therefore, read the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is always one of my favorite things to read. Resolution 25-19, acceptance of gifts, Veteran Services Department and Senior Center. Whereas the Franklin Service, Services, Veteran Services Department and the Franklin Senior Center have received generous donations in the total amount of $15,014.88 to be used at the discretion of each department as follows. Donation summary, Veteran Services Department, $11,959.90. Donations to be used at the discretion of Veteran Service Department to both the Veterans Gift Fund and the Franklin Municipal Veterans Assistance Fund in support of local veterans and their families. Senior Center, $3,014.98. Donations to be used at the discretion of Senior Center through the Council on Aging Gift Fund to provide services and programs to senior citizens in the Franklin community. Donor information is included on the April 16, 2025 Town Council Meeting Agenda Packet. Now therefore be resolved that the Town Council, Town of Franklin, behalf of the Veteran Service Department and Senior Center gratefully accept these generous donations to be used at the discretion of each department for the purposes noted above. This resolution should become effective according to the provisions of the Town of Franklin Home Rule Charter.
Move Resolution 25-19.
Second.
Motion and second. Discussion, Sarah.
Twice the one, Nate. Sarah Amroth, Senior Center Director. I would just be amiss if I didn't share. Those are very large-scale donations. We're thankful for all of those. Shannon had a Veterans Council meeting tonight too. So just wanted to share on behalf of her department and ours, a large part of those donations came from Robert Catalano's estate. I can't talk about it too long because we just loved Bob so much. And now to know that he loved and appreciated us that way too is just really heartwarming. And we just thank his family for carrying this out. And thank Bob. Thank you.
You said it better than I could. So thank you, Sarah.
That's awesome.
Any further discussion?
Just a big thank you.
Councilor Peligre.
To the chair, just a question. When we say it's at the discretion of the department, do we ever find out what they actually did with that donation? I think it would be good for us to know. We certainly would appreciate it.
Yeah, I mean, we can certainly do that. I mean, I don't know how.
Paying bills.
Well-
Well, yeah, I mean, I just, I mean, we can. It just depends on, I guess, everybody's just going to ask me, I just get a report out of UNICEF, I think, and send it to someone about where we spend the money. But it, you know, generally goes back into veterans and, you know, obviously the senior center, but-
Oh, I realize it goes back to the departments. I'm just asking, what does it go for? You know, what are we spending the money on?
Well, I mean, Sarah can answer some of that in terms of the donations right now. But I mean, it goes back into the center, goes back into programs. In the case of the Municipal Veterans Fund, it goes back into services for veterans, like food assistance, transportation assistance, you know, fuel assistance. It can't be paid for housing, unfortunately, because that's another state law in the way of housing. But, you know, I mean, I think you, you could also, Councilor Peligre, go meet with Shannon or with Sarah and sit down and go through what all the expenditures are. I just don't know how much detail you're looking for. Because I think those funds are, I'm not answering your question, am I?
That isn't what I'm asking, Jamie. I'm just saying that it would be nice if, $4,000 was going for a particular thing that we would all know about and appreciate. We certainly appreciate everything that you do, you know that. But just to know if it was something in particular that was needed, and it's being paid for now. I think the residents would like to know too.
Yeah, I can add a little bit more to that. I mean, if someone asks us particularly what we have to spend it for, you know, in a case like this, there was nothing prescribed to us on what they would like to use it for. I think for some of the larger amounts, we easily could talk to that when we're looking for bigger purchases. I'll say at least for my department, it's a little difficult. We get a lot of like five and $10 donations. So I can say generally those get put together to bring in some programs that people have been asking for, that sometimes we don't run if we don't have the money because we have to run programs that are $2 or $3, sometimes a little bit more than that. So donations allow us to bring more things in and offer at a low cost to the seniors. Also, a lot of times for social services, if there are needs in our community, that isn't something in the municipal budget, but sometimes people just really have needs. So with the donations, we're able to help seniors. But it really goes back for us into programmings, into all the programs that we hold. And then if there's something like equipment-wise that we might need, you know, usually we would look towards work with facilities and capital requests for that. But if we can cover something with donations, we would do that too. Yeah, but if you have more questions, you know what? I'm around. I know what hand and foot is. You come right down afterwards.
I certainly would.
Occasionally, when there's a larger, larger number or a larger purchase that was made or a program that was maybe put in place, just come back and let us know that in fact, through the donations that have been received, we were able to put this program back or we bought this.
Parties, programs, right? I mean, usually-
Yeah, I can do that, especially if it's a large-scale amount. Yeah, if we can track that.
Yeah, I totally understand the smaller donations.
Yeah, they put them all together.
Put them all together, understood. But some of the larger ones, and I think that's, I think that's what Councilor Peligre was looking to get. Any further discussion? Seeing none, the vote will come on the motion to approve Resolution 25-19. Again, a majority votes required. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Town administrators report.
Yeah, to you, Mr. Chairman, a couple things. The bleachers up at the high school are now just about done, which is huge. This is, thank you. So we're, we worked with, the superintendent is going to be working with us to set up a time to go commemorate that during a game at night, probably a lacrosse game over the next couple of months. So this is a really big deal. This is, I know for you in particular, probably, Mr. Chairman, 10, 12 years ago, to be able to have that, which is really good. We have been in touch with Habitat for Humanity. They've recorded the deed at the Old South Meeting House, and we are now, have a work plan in front of us, and we're going through the required steps through the preservation agreement. So we're expecting at some point in June to have a commemoration of that, again, probably before council meeting or at a date at the evening. And part of that will also be to celebrate Habitat being in Franklin. And we're going to have a little gathering up there in June. I want to thank, obviously, I know many of you, several of you were able to come. Thank the Lieutenant Governor for coming here last week. We sat around and talked to her for about an hour, talked to her about a lot of issues, namely Franklin Ridge, great plug, Councilor Frangello. I had the letter. He made the cell. And I'm looking for big things out of the administration on that. Want to congratulate the fire department. They got another grant for $7,200 that officially, yep, he's tough.
I know.
That officially gets them over, in six years, over $3 million in grant money in that one department. So when we're talking about, you know, I think we all hear comments from people, you know, in the community these days, how can we not celebrate our incredible fire department that gave that kind of grant money outside of the budget issues? And, you know, not to slight any of the other departments, I mean, Sarah makes a couple jokes out of it, but every one of our departments applies for a lot of grants, and we do very, very well as an organization on that. And just want to thank, also give credit out really quickly to the Senior Center and their staff. This month's Council on Aging statewide newsletter featured our Senior Center, because our Senior Center is unquestionably one of the best in the Commonwealth. And so it was great for them to be recognized among their peers across the state of Massachusetts. So lastly, I won't spoil all the other tidbits, but thanks to Jared and Julie and Amy, my office, and all the staff department heads. We have a brand-new week, bi-weekly, bi-weekly newsletter going out via email called Franklin First. Volume one will go out this Friday. As all of you know, this Friday, the town administrator's budget will be released on April 18. And so we're starting every other week after the week of council meetings. On that Friday, we're going to do a summary of some of the highlights that I go through at Town Manager's Report, and also some of the highlights at the council meetings. And we're going to put that out and do an email distribution list. I think we've got about 1,500 people on our constant contact list, so we're going to start sending it out to try to again, get out some of the highlights, quick hits, one sentence on some of the positive things that you've heard about tonight out to the rest of the community. So other than that, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jamie. Okay, moving on, subcommittee reports. The Town Administrator Evaluation ad hoc subcommittee, we just need to vote to accept the report that was given. We should have voted it at the last meeting.
Oh, is that why it's here?
Yeah, that's why it's here.
Yeah.
It should have been voted at the last meeting.
Do I need to read anything again?
No, just make a motion.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, it's my pleasure to make a motion to accept the Town Administrator Annual Review and the evaluation that was done, the memo from me dated February 27. All councilors should have a copy of it.
Yep, second.
Motion and second. Discussion on the motion. Max?
So I, I'm gracious to hear all, all of the great stuff in the Town Administrator's Report. And I, I want to, I think, I just want to provide some input into the annual review for Administrator Helen. I think Mr. Helen is extraordinary, extraordinarily bright and a tireless worker who has worked diligently to accomplish the goals of the council. His ability to prepare a several hundred-page budget with minimal support staff is particularly-
Hang on a second.
Hang on, Max.
Mark?
I just have to advise you, if you get a motion and second and-
We're in discussion.
On the motion.
Right.
Accept the report or not.
Oh, not, not the-
That's all that's in front of you.
Oh, I get it.
I can withdraw the motion, Mr. Chairman, if we want discussion.
Seems like this is disgusting.
I'm just going to finish in a minute.
I don't see that it's, I mean, should continue.
Thank you. I appreciate it. So I just, I just, I think, you know, Administrator Helen's ability to prepare a several hundred-page budget with very little support, slim budget, is particularly impressive. I also think that it's the duty of the council to provide proper- I also think that it's the duty of the council to provide proper oversight and constructive criticism on how Mr. Helen can improve his performance going forward. Even the most qualified administrator, I don't care if it's Barack Obama, have areas in which they can improve. This report doesn't recommend any areas for improvement. My goal is not to criticize Mr. Helen, but to urge the council not to direct its duty to provide proper oversight and support. Proper oversight ultimately benefits the town and Mr. Helen himself by ensuring continuous improvement in town administration. The town administrator, the town council should acknowledge Mr. Helen's strengths, but also advise him on ways he can better serve the town going forward. I urge you to consider ways to improve oversight and accountability as you continue this process moving forward. Thanks for accommodating me. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Max. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, the vote will come on the motion to accept the report of the Town Administrator Evaluation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Capital has not met. EDC has not met. Joint Budget has not met. Police Station, GATRA.
No GATRA meeting this month, but I did want to alert the public to yet another public meeting. Again, these meetings are livestreamed. You can both access the livestream directly, but the Senior Center also hosts a livestream. So the next public meeting is Thursday, April 24th at 2:30. Thursday, April 24th at 2:30. Again, you can access directly. You can go to the GATRA social media or my social media, or you can stop by Franklin Senior Center, unless I'm missing a detail there.
Can she speak?
I was just gonna say that you can't access it from home. You have to come to the Senior Center.
Okay.
They don't allow it. We're not allowed to share the link publicly.
Okay. All right. I'm gonna follow up on that, but I appreciate it. Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilor Frangello. Okay, future agenda items. Councilor Comey, Elijah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just one thing to the town administrator. I've gotten some complaints about a home over on Palomino, one of the friendly 40Bs, if you will, that the town has some oversight on, being in pretty bad disrepair, and water damaged, abandoned, insects, rodents, the whole thing from the neighborhood's concern. Can we, can you just look into that and circle back at a future time?
I'd be happy to. I can also suggest, I also know for a fact the building commissioner and the board of health director are well aware of it. Abandoned properties like this oftentimes take years to solve, but I know that they are absolutely on it. You can rest assured, anybody that you've, that's reached out to you, that the building commissioner and board of health director are absolutely aware of it, and they're working through the process. It oftentimes involves Mark, the Attorney General, and other legal entities. So I know they're frustrated, but they're gonna have to really, I'm just gonna urge patience, because this stuff can take a very long time. But they are aware of it, and they are working on it for sure. I've heard that address. I don't want to say the number, but I know.
Yeah, I didn't want to say the number either, but okay.
There is a number. There is a, there is a house there. We are aware.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Chandler. Future agenda.
Nothing at this time.
Counselor Poligree.
Speak in the mic. Nothing at this time.
Counselor Sheridan. Counselor Frangello.
Nothing at this time.
Counselor Hamblin.
Nothing at this time.
Counselor Jones.
Yes, Mrs. Chairman, through you to the town administrator. Update on 300 Fisher Street.
Right now, or do you want?
No, no, no.
We can do that.
Not right now. You don't have to do it right now.
We wouldn't splash that on you.
No. Yeah, it's late.
Anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Ms. Delarco?
Nothing at this time.
Jamie?
Yep.
The project on Chestnut Street.
Oh, yeah, that's...
Right over here?
Yeah. What's going on with that?
They're about to develop it. Someone bought the parcel, or bought the project. That was a 40B. That was an unfriendly 40B.
I know it was. That's why I'm asking what's...
And...
It was over 55.
It was over 55. And someone bought the permits and, from someone else, and now they're going in to start construction. That was permitted, that was the pre-pandemic, for sure.
I've just been sitting for a long time.
Just so other people in the public know.
I know Counselor Delarco and I have, I've had, got a couple of calls on what's the status, what's going on with the...
That's behind Ford, right? Is that behind Ford?
No, no.
Right next to the...
Right next to the stop.
I got you.
The nursing home.
Next to the nursing home.
Oh, right, right.
Oh, different one.
Two different ones.
This is two different ones. The building's already up. Yes.
Oh, my bad. I was talking about the other one at the corner of King. I was actually thinking of the one...
The one behind Ford down below.
Oh, no.
On Milliken. I'm talking about Milliken, right?
I'm talking, I'm talking about the, right next to the nursing home.
Right.
That's been sitting there idle forever.
Seems like it.
I will, I will double-check with Gus. I don't want to speak on the record about something I'm not 100% of, but that project is obviously, as you know, had tons of players involved in financial problems through the years. So let me double-check with Gus to see if there's been activity.
I can. I'd just like an update as to what's going on with it. Okay. Counselor comments. Counselor Sheridan.
So my condolences to Counselor Delarco for you. Thank you. So my, I guess I'd say to you first, this was a nice meeting, but condolences to the synagogue for that attack. And I guess the question is, any updates on that, as far as the church or the synagogue? Again, otherwise, this was a great meeting. Congratulations to the sports teams. Thank you for the great presentations. And this is a big weekend, but the anniversary of the Lexi Conference. I looked it up. This was fun, and they said there was Minutemen from Renton that would be us that went there that day.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Sheridan. Counselor Frangello?
Yeah, thanks for naming the anti-Semitic actions. I was really, really proud to be a Franklin resident leader in the wake of that. I thought the timely coordination between the Franklin Interfaith Council and the Franklin Freedom Team to get a bunch of people that have a show of support, the way that we do this time after time, and really make sure that we continue to rally and not let these things simmer and not let them, you know, fester or even accelerate or build upon themselves, I think is really, really powerful and speaks well to the community and how we can still come together. So that's always great to see. Two other things. Yeah, Janes Walk coming up. That's one of, probably my favorite activity of the year now. This is gonna be the third year of helping to lead this event, where we walk around downtown Franklin and talk about zoning and some of the changes that have happened and are going to happen. So we continue to grow that crowd every year. Would love to see more folks. Rail Trail, the Franklin-Bellarmine Rail Trail Committee have their annual 5K. This is their biggest fundraiser of the year. If you don't know, they have been working tirelessly and have continued to have successes, including the extension of the trail to downtown Franklin, and will continue to support different efforts to improve that. Anyway, their largest fundraiser, the annual 5K, May 17th at the Grove Street Trailhead. You can go on their website or social media to find out how to register for that. And then I would, I would just leave with condolences to the Mooney and Teddy Gallaghers and Franklin Vet families for the loss of Caitlin Mooney. She was a high school classmate of mine and a really sweet soul and a really kind person, and she'll be missed.
Thank you, Counselor Frangello. Counselor Hamblin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through the chair, I would also like to send condolences to the Delarco family and to the Mooney family. I mean, there's a huge loss to the community. So I just got this email from a friend of mine who's 91 or 92 years old. He lives in Austria, and I just thought, I just wanted to read a couple of the sentences that he sent me. "In these times, it is difficult to find words for all the bad events in the world. I am reminded too much of situations that I experienced as a child that I thought I had left behind. Nazi rule, bombing war, occupation by Russians, and later Allied troops. The friendly reception that I found afterwards in the USA, as a young student, determined my entire later life and filled it with optimism and the belief in the good. It is difficult to part with such a positive worldview near the end of one's life." So while we go in to enjoy the holidays this weekend, celebrating the 250th birthday of America, I want to ask people to be revolutionary, be kind, be an active listener, make a connection. And remember, just because we may disagree, doesn't mean that I don't listen and that I don't learn from you and adapt my opinions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Hamblin. Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Gee, wow, a lot has already been said, but again, condolences to the Mooney family and to Bobby and your, and your family. I mean, past, I mean, brother-in-law, it's very hard. It's really sad. You know, Mr. Chairman, I just want to thank you for, you know, one of the things that, that you've really done a great job working with the administration and the departments is bringing, is bringing in the individuals that we have from, from our various departments and talking about the wonderful services and having the people come in earlier tonight and getting the awards for such, such noble efforts of saving that gentleman's life at the basketball game. You know, these, these really bring the community into the council meetings, and I appreciate that. You know, so again, you know, for the, for the gentleman whose life was saved by the hands of Dean College members, you know, God bless. That's amazing. To the girls' cheerleading team that was here earlier tonight, just, you know, thank you for coming tonight and being a part of our town council meeting. It's so wonderful to hear these, the tremendous efforts that went into accomplishing these things. And the boys' basketball team, holy smokes. 60, no. And having them come in tonight, that was amazing. But lastly, I'd just like, and I'd be remiss if I didn't bring it up. The Franklin Children's Museum is currently being built up on Cottage Street, and they are looking for any, any further funds in support to, to help build it. They're moving along at a really, at a really good pace. Aaron and Meg have been posting some really cool pictures about their progress, but I did want to kind of throw that out to everybody. If you've got friends, if you've got additional funds, if you've got an extra five bucks here and there that you can put towards something, it's really a noble thing to put, to put an investment into. It's going to be such a wonderful staple in such a, such a great location in downtown. That's gonna be the first children's museum in our area, and I'm just so looking forward to it. If anyone has any questions, you can always reach out to Aaron Gallagher or Meg down at the museum. I just want, that's, that's the last thing I have to say.
Thank you, Counselor Jones. Counselor Delarco?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I just, you know, I'd like to, you know, congratulate the basketball teams and everybody else. I, in the Mooney family, Caitlin happened to be one of my daughter's really, really close friends, and she was over the house all the time. Actually, this is the last time I saw Caitlin was the night before Thanksgiving at, at my daughter's house. So, I mean, and she gave me a big hug, and, but she was a sweetheart and way too young to go. And I, I know she graduated with you, Colleen. I knew that. That's the first thing my daughter said. So condolences to her. Feel me, it's gonna be a tough one. And that's, that's about it. I just, everything else has been said. You know, I lost my brother-in-law last night. I lost my mother-in-law a month before, so thank God my mother-in-law never lost. She had nine children. She didn't, she never lost one of them, and I think my brother-in-law waited until she passed to, to say goodbye. But, you know, so it's been, it's been a long month to put it the...
Crazy.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Delarco.
Everyone that sent condolences to please.
Thank you. Counselor Poligree.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to thank Dave Callahan tonight for coming and for the school committee getting together to continue using the Ben Horstman name. I mean, that was a big thing for them to change their mind about, which I hope they only learn to think twice before you do something as big as this. I mean, because you're gonna disrupt people, make them very, very angry in town. But aside from that, thank you, Dan, and school committee. The, I wanna, as a fun thing, the Easter Bunny is gonna be at the museum on Saturday, and we hope that people will come by. We'll have a Polaroid so that we can have pictures taken to the temple. My heart goes out to what they went through. We were, I was not in the country at this time, and I sent a memo to them about why these things have to happen for us to our Catholic Church, now to the temple. This is unheard of and unacceptable. To all that have passed, Peter Mooney, who we all know as being an assessor downstairs for many years, this was his daughter that passed away. So we've mentioned her, but haven't mentioned what Peter is going through right now. Another one was Sylvie Afico. She passed away, and she was a lifelong resident in Franklin. Okay, her husband owned the Afico's rolling drum. So I mean, people that we know and that we're so sorry to have heard these things. Very sad. I'll get into ZBA in a second. Let me make sure I got all of these things set here. Okay. Tonight, we heard many, many presentations and comments and that about how Franklin is so lucky for what we have. We are very, very lucky. We have the programs that are offered. We have the cheer, cheerleaders. We have the basketball. All of these people that make Franklin such a wonderful, wonderful community, and I'm so proud of every one of them. I've been an official for the, just over four decades now, and I have to say, the Stobitz property, that problem was probably one of the most difficult that I've had to endure. The emails and that, when I came home, was just inundated on my computer. And to all that had sent me a memo, a text, I did not get back to you, but please know it's not, that I didn't agree, but I agree with every single one of you that called, that got in touch with me. I opposed this project from day one, and I'm sorry that it's gone this far. The ZBA has given us a bad reputation, not only by having Zoom meetings, but by not voting safe harbor. I'm happy that they're back to regular meetings, and I hope that it's not too late for us to do something about voting safe harbor. Don't understand, but I'm sure Mark would be able to tell us, but this isn't a question and answer time, why it would be just the EBA when we're the legislative body of the community. I know that that's the law, but I'm saying, my own opinion, my own opinion only, we are the legislative body, and why we couldn't do something about that makes no sense to me. So again, I agree with all those people that have sent memos asking why we didn't do anything. We need to listen to our residents, especially, my God, for small things and large things. I'm sorry that the council vote of 5-4 approved this project. It should not have happened, in my opinion, and again, everything I'm saying right here is in my opinion. We talk about housing, you know, affordable housing, and I always do a pros and cons list before I vote on things of this magnitude. I didn't come up with any pros to this project at all. And to hear anyone say that affordable housing rents are around $2,000 to $2,500 a month, that's their whole social security check for the month. How are they going to be able to live paying that? So we've gotta look into ways that we can do something to help with the affordable housing. Make it affordable housing. Look up that word in the dictionary, and you'll see, these projects are not affordable. And that's it. I think that's about it, but I think you see... I think that's about it, but I think you see where I'm coming from. And my fellow counselors here, they voted the no, the four. And I just wish it hadn't passed, it could have been over with. And I'm sorry for all the residents and the thousand signatures that they got, you know, that were against us. And I don't know if there's anything we can do about it now. Is that something I can ask?
No.
No.
There isn't anything you can do about it now, it's too late. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Pillegrini. Counselor Chandler?
Through you, nice job. I'm just gonna echo the sentiments of all the counselors. You guys said everything perfectly tonight about all the condolences and the sports teams. Thank you for already saying that. I actually disagree with Counselor Pillegrini on one little thing.
Okay. That's okay.
Tonight, School Committee Chairman Callahan spoke about the letter we sent him, which I'm glad that they appreciated that. But I have to disagree with him. This, it's the purview of the school committee, so this is just my opinion. To call the Horace Man complex, that's where I disagree. I think that's just not gonna, no one's gonna say that. It's always, you go to the high school, you go to Horace Man, you go up the crossing. Nobody's ever gonna say, I'm going to the complex of Horace Man. It's just not gonna happen. Come on, guys, please.
You are right.
I mean, we just, that's just appeasement. You know, I mean, it's just, I don't think it's right. And I really, and I don't know when I'm supposed to go to that meeting. I don't know if they're voting on it this week. Hope, please send me an email if anybody knows. But I think it should just be the Horace Man. I, I can't, I couldn't hear of any other reason for them not calling it Horace Man. One person said that it's gonna hurt the feelings 'cause it's three different schools. I mean, it's always been the Horace Man. It was the Horace Man High School, correct? I just, I just wish they would think long and hard about this. That's just my opinion and just, I have a feeling there's a few other people in town that have the same feeling. And lastly, I know some people have brought up the swastika sticker incident and, you know, the thoughts and prayers thing doesn't matter. Because I think the last five incidents like this that we've had in this town, I don't think anyone's ever been charged with anything. Now, what does that say? That scares me a little bit because that keeps people from doing things when they know they're gonna be in trouble, but there's that many incidents. And I know there's a few people here that weren't here back in 95 to 96 when we had skinheads here.
I remember that.
And what we had to do to get them out of town, and unfortunately, it's what happened in Norfolk that actually got rid of them, not. So I just, it bothers me a little. It seems like nothing ever gets charged. Maybe I should have asked for an update, Mr. Chairman, during the things, but I, I think we'll wait and hear a little more, that's all. And I appreciate you for hearing me out. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Chandler. Counselor, call me a ledger.
Last but not least, Tom. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Bobby, my condolences for your, for your brother-in-law and certainly my condolences to, to the Mooney family. I was proud to stand with fellow counselors that day on the common against Jewish hate. I thought that was very powerful. The program was powerful and it showed our Jewish neighbors and friends that we are here for them. The people that minimized what happened, the comments on, particularly on social media were terribly uncalled for. Someone that paints swastikas, someone that does damage to a temple, those are big deals. So people were asking for, well, you know, quantify the damage done and it really wasn't that bad. And what happened in St. Mary's was worse. And it's like, you know what, folks?
It's all bad.
It's all bad.
That's right.
It's all bad. And we did come together as a town and we stood there and we said, we don't tolerate this, it's not what we're all about. And we're here to support and show love and that was the common theme. I was particularly proud that a member of every religious denomination in town spoke at that rally. Every single one. That's pretty powerful when folks can say, we may not agree on religious philosophy, but we agree on love and we agree against hate. To add on to what Counselor Pillegrini has said, I have taken a little bit of a step back from being, you know, the, the social media champion of the council, trying my hardest to fight with everybody all the time. I've taken a step back from my own mental health, but the comments around Stobarts have been incredibly troubling. And I have tried to say on many occasions that we are nine people, we don't always agree, and that's okay because that is the process. There are, there are nine for a reason. I may not agree with that project moving forward, but I respect the process. The comments that are coming out insulting people, calling them names, saying don't frequent their businesses, asking for personal financial audits of all of us because we must be on the take getting money from developers, that's insulting. And I challenge anybody out there to think twice, that is insulting. We are volunteers giving hundreds of hours of our time away from our families, away from our businesses, away from other things we could be doing because we care. And if you want people to step up and run for these positions, then you can't accuse them of being dirty and not giving them the support that they need to be able to do these jobs. It's like, everybody, 300 comments in today on the particular Stobarts thread, and that's just one of probably 50 that have happened in the last two weeks. And it's full of angry, nasty comments. And again, I, I understand where some of the anger is coming from. I truly do. I don't, I didn't support the project. However, I do support the council and I support the fact that a decision was made and, decision was made a year ago. It is passed through several committees and it's moving forward. And that's just how it goes. And, but for people to say they don't trust any of us, they don't trust any elected official, and they don't trust anyone on the town staff, those are the comments that we're hearing. So basically, you don't trust anyone. And that's really, really sad because we have a lot to be damn proud of as a town. We saw it tonight over and over and over again, the wonderful things that our town stands for, the wonderful things that we celebrate, the wonderful places where we put money. We have to find a way to get past the vitriol, get past the anger, be here for each other. And I've said it on Facebook, I've said it publicly, I've said it in private meetings, if this damn override doesn't pass, then the town that we know and love is gonna be decimated, it's gonna be gutted. Program after program after program is gonna be gutted and that's not what we're about and that's not what we should be celebrating. So I will try to leave on a happy note and tell everybody to have a happy Easter. You're gonna, you're gonna get Jamie's budget report on Good Friday. I don't know if that's an omen or not, right? But, you know, take it for whatever it is. Spend some time with your family, spend some time with your friends and try to take some time and appreciate. I'll share a happy thought, that I don't leave on a negative. I got to go away this weekend to New York, some time away with my husband, some much needed time away from the kids. And we're seeing some shows, seeing, seeing some friends, having some great food. And we got an opportunity to go across the street to a theater from our hotel. They were doing a Sondheim 30, like his catalog, 30 different songs. And we didn't have tickets and I went up to the box office at 2:00, it was 1:30, and I said, my God, it's pouring rain, is there any seats left for this thing? Bernadette Peters is in the show. And the kid looked at me and he said, you know, I got four seats, orchestra, sell them to you for $45 a ticket. And I said, wow, life just got good. We go in and who comes across the stage with Bernadette Peters and every Broadway legend imaginable but Beth Level? The lady who was just here performing in Franklin at our Franklin Performing Arts Company Black Box fundraiser. And I turned to my friends beaming with pride. I said, I know her. I got, I got to meet her, she sang at a fundraiser in Franklin. They're like, stop it. I'm like, no, she came to Franklin. We get Broadway performers come to Franklin, imagine that, so, you know, suck on it. And, and all, and all of them, all of them laughed and said, they just couldn't believe it and she sang her heart out and gave the best show she could have given. And I was just beaming and once again was so proud of my town. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Call me a ledger. I think it's all been said by everybody. Offering condolences to Counselor Delarco and Gigi's, Gigi's brother and Counselor Delarco's brother-in-law. And the Mooney family. But as well, I'd like to offer my condolences to the Sheridan family as John Sheridan.
I did too.
Passed away a week and a half ago and he was a Franklin legend for sure. He was an old-time townie and he will be missed by all of us. I'd also like to end on a positive note here and just say how thankful I am, and I think we all are, for all of the people that came before us this evening. The basketball team, the cheerleaders, the group from Dean, you know, Callie and the perform, and the presentation and Amy and your presentation. There are so, at Counselor Call me a ledger's point, there are so many good things going on in this community. We need to focus on those good things because there is a lot of good things going on and we need to continue to improve on those. So with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Non-debatable. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post? Thank you.